Gloria Gonzalez-Tolakia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Christine Mauer. Christine Mauer. I'll come back. Trish Bodie.
Here.
Shadé Fashahun.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here.
Paul Gauthier.
Here.
Frances- I'm sorry, Christine Mauer. Yep.
I know we're trying to get her connected right now. She's gonna connect virtually. So I think we're just having some technical issues. But it is 6:16 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is my pleasure to welcome Cadet Master Sergeant Maria Rodriguez to lead us in the pledges tonight. Maria is a junior at Leander High School and the daughter of Nina and Erin Short. As an AFJ ROTC Non-Commission Officer in Charge of Public Affairs, Maria promotes AFJ ROTC activities and publishes the Corps of Cadets newsletter. When she is not in school, Maria likes to spend time with friends. After she graduates from high school, Maria plans to join the Air National Guard and pursue a career in forensic science. Well done, Maria.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we give Maria one more round of applause? Alright, now we're going to move over to our spotlight on learning and hear from a few of our alumni and current students from New Hope High School.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. It is my humble pleasure to always serve as the principal of New Hope High School. So New Hope High School is a very safe and innovative learning environment in this district. It's actually the original school of choice in our district and have helped thousands of students graduate over the years. So far this year alone, we've already graduated, let's see, six students. We've had 109 course completions. We've got 16 more kids that'll be joining our campus in about seven school days. And we've got 50 kids in there right now. So the thing about New Hope that makes New Hope is that it is a family environment. What we do at New Hope is we take an individual, we listen to what their specific needs are, and then what we have done is we've created and curated classrooms that allow them to access an online learning environment at their own pace, at their own time, with the support of instructors in the classroom. Now what that does ultimately is it allows a student to accelerate. It doesn't matter if you're at zero, you can accelerate from there. If you're going fast, you can accelerate from there. And we're gonna try to help you get to your life goals. That's what New Hope's all about. But it's not just about graduation, it's about what happens after high school as well. So normally what we do is we bring up students and talk about what's happening this year only. But what I'd like to show you is what has happened over time. So I'm gonna turn it over to the best spokespeople of New Hope, the students and staff themselves.
Hello. My name is Morgan Kelly and I was a student at New Hope from March 2017 of my junior year until I graduated early in February 2018 of my senior year. My original campus was Cedar Park High School. When I began as a freshman, I was proud to be a Timber Wolf. When asked what school I went to, I felt pride in saying Cedar Park High. But when the content of the classes started to advance, I was left behind. As my time there marched on, I often felt alone. Despite my efforts, I just couldn't keep up academically with my peers. If I couldn't grasp the lesson along with my class, then my work doubled. I couldn't have my teacher reteach the lesson over and over because they didn't have that time and everyone else already understood it. I was one student in a class of many. I wasn't going to hold the class up just because I didn't understand. I would just have to study harder at home. But if I didn't understand the material, how could I teach myself at home? It was a vicious cycle that I felt like I couldn't escape. As an adult now, I understand that I was one of 2,200 students and that it's near impossible to individually cater to every student. But as a teenager, it didn't feel that way. It felt like no one was paying attention or offering the support I needed. I struggled with the thought of not making it to the finish line with everybody else. I considered dropping out, but I didn't want to take that path. I didn't want to settle for a GED when I had always envisioned myself earning a high school diploma. Don't get me wrong, the large campuses work and they have worked for many students for a long time. But as we all know, everybody is different and there will always be students who felt the same way I did. Students who know they're capable but can't seem to make themselves fit the mold. So during my junior year, I had a conversation with my assistant principal about a place I had heard of called New Hope. Although I was familiar with the name, I hadn't really heard anything positive. In fact, it was often dismissed with the nickname "No Hope." A few days after our conversation, I interviewed and soon I was accepted to become a student. My last day at Cedar Park, I told some friends that I would be moving schools. The response I got, I'll never forget. "Morgan, you're going to New Hope. I thought you were smart." And that is the reason I will never stop advocating for this school. We can't alter the past, but we have the power to reshape the narrative. It's up to us to redefine what New Hope represents in someone's mind. It was at New Hope that I learned that my way of learning doesn't make me any less intelligent or any less capable than others. It was at New Hope that I learned what a genuine sense of community felt like. I met so many people with great passions, paired with teachers who helped drive those passions. Teachers who would find you doodling in a journal and say, "If this helps you stay productive with the rest of your day, then I encourage you to continue." I met so many driven individuals, paired with a staff literally cheering you on as you walked out the door on your last day. Being in a school surrounded by people who make sense to you is inspiring. Watching someone complete their final class and graduate early pushes you to do the same. Some students need to graduate early. Some students have internships for their lifelong careers waiting for them. Some students have a head start on their plans and are forced to wait for their set graduation date. At New Hope, there is no waiting. Some students are already handling things that can't be put on hold. If it weren't for New Hope, there would be students who would have to sacrifice their high school education for the responsibilities of life. New Hope is so important. During my time there, I had sudden challenges in my personal life pop up. Not once did I feel like I was going through it alone. When I would walk through the door, I would be greeted with a sincere "How are you doing?" and with the attitude of "How are we going to get through this day together?" They didn't take the wheel from you, but they always let you know they'd be riding shotgun right along with you and for every single one of their students. Before New Hope, my biggest fear in high school was that I would never experience walking the stage. I envisioned myself sitting in the crowd cheering on my peers as they started their lives, but with a sense of being left behind. But New Hope made the difference. New Hope is the reason that I was not only able to walk the stage once, but twice. New Hope is the reason I am in the position to speak with you today. As I look back on my journey, it's clear that New Hope was much more than just a school for me, it was a turning point. Now I am proud to return to New Hope as the attendance clerk and work alongside this new generation of students. It's a chance to give back to the community that helped me become who I am today and to contribute to the growth and success of others on their own journeys. As we move forward, it is up to us as a community to keep the momentum going. By supporting and inspiring future students, we can ensure that New Hope continues to be a place where potential is realized and futures are shaped. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Annabelle Baker and I graduated with the class of 22. And I wanted to give you all a little background on why I transferred to New Hope my senior year. In 2020, my father passed away right before COVID hit and that was the first hit, my little block at school. I did not help that we were even, we didn't even finish sophomore year. I personally struggled from doing school over Zoom, so I really started falling behind in school. Junior year started and I vowed I would stay focused and go to school and do my work and pick everything back up, and I did for a while. In November of 2020, I had an incident with a boy happen. The first week back at school was a living nightmare. Struggling with something that big and not knowing how to open up to anyone about it was the biggest drain I've ever experienced. I started getting terrible anxiety attacks and every time I would think about going to class, I would just shut down and not want to deal with it. I skipped class every single day for almost a whole semester. I failed all my classes and ended up having to take summer school where I met Mr. Bork. He talked to me about New Hope and convinced me that's where I needed to be. So I signed up and started at New Hope at the beginning of my senior year. If I hadn't decided to go to New Hope, I probably would not have graduated, much less graduated early. The moment I stepped into school, I felt safe and important. New Hope isn't an ordinary school. It fits around your learning, not the other way around. If you miss a day because you're out of town or sick, instead of missing lessons and getting behind in that class, you pick up right where you left off. It also benefits those who have learning struggles or ADD. If you zone out, you just need to, or just need a break, you can pause or backtrack. New Hope doesn't just center their teaching around scholar lessons, they teach you real-life lessons. They give you advice when you need it, whether you think so or not. They teach you to be kind and caring to those around you. And they personally taught me that no matter how high an obstacle is, you can always get through it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jada. Jada, and as of a couple weeks ago, I am a New Hope graduate. Today, I would like to talk about my appreciation for New Hope and New Hope High School because choosing this one is a big decision and finding the right environment can make all the difference in a student's life. Last year during my junior year, I was going through a very tough time and that made it very difficult for me to prioritize my education. I feel like I didn't have the support I needed, whether it was from staff or my peers. For me, New Hope High School has been that place where I not only feel comfortable, but also empowered to succeed and I'd like to share some of the reasons why. First and foremost, the staff and teachers at New Hope are incredibly helpful and supportive. From the first day, I noticed that teachers here aren't just doing their job, they're genuinely invested in our success. They go beyond the typical student-teacher relationship by taking the time to understand who we are as individuals. The smaller class sizes also play a huge role in this. With fewer students in each class, teachers can give us the personalized attention that many of us need to excel. This sense of belonging and being seen is something I didn't always feel on my home campus, where it was easy to get lost in the crowd. And staff are not only focused on academics, they want to know about our lives outside of school as well, including what challenges we might be facing at home. This level of care and understanding makes it easier to open up and seek help when we need it. This isn't a personal experience, but I have witnessed councils of staff that walk throughout the building, like Ms. Lane, who is always asking those kids with their heads down, "Hey, is everything okay? Do you need a snack?" And that just shows how the staff at New Hope don't just care about us doing our work, but our well-being as people as well. One of the things I value most at New Hope is a sense of control I have over my own learning journey. It's empowering to know that my progress is based on my own efforts and that I have the freedom to navigate my education in a way that works best for me. Whether I needed more time to grasp a difficult subject, or I was ready to move ahead faster, I had the flexibility to do so without feeling pressured to keep up with a one-size-fits-all schedule. One of the many reasons I considered New Hope was my drive to start my career early. In January, I will be starting a nursing program at Massa Sway College in Massachusetts and without New Hope, that wouldn't have been possible. Instead, I would have been sitting in a classroom on my home campus wishing I wasn't. At New Hope, I never felt like that. Every day, I was eager to arrive at school and be greeted by the staff and students and get to work. In short, New Hope High School has provided me with the guidance, care, and autonomy that I needed to flourish. It's not just a school, it's a place where I felt seen, heard, and supported every step of the way. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be part of this community and excited about what future holds, knowing that I have such a strong support system behind me and I'm also thankful for the opportunity to share my experience at New Hope. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Lane and I have the privilege of serving as the Assistant Principal of New Hope High School. I've had the privilege of supporting New Hope High School for the past three years in various capacities, watching over 400 scholars achieve their goals and move on to the next chapter of their lives. The stories you heard today are just a glimpse of the incredible journeys our students have taken. Despite their diverse backgrounds and challenges, they all share a common desire to achieve their dreams. Our seven high school campuses do amazing work supporting students. New Hope is for students who want to accelerate their learning so they can graduate early. New Hope is also for students who need to accelerate in order to graduate on time. Our innovative learning environment allows students to access curriculum at their own pace with the support of certified teachers who provide on-demand tutoring, which meets the needs of each and every student that walks through our building. Our small team of dedicated teachers and administrative staff have created a home away from home for our students. They meet each and every student where they are, fostering growth, learning, and success personally and academically. Through their dedication and expertise, we've created a safe, innovative learning environment where students can thrive and pursue their passions. I'm so proud of the work that we do here at New Hope and I'm grateful to be a part of the community that is committed to helping our students succeed. As we continue to support and empower our scholars together, we will see even more amazing stories of perseverance, resilience, and achievement. If any of these stories resonate with you and you're thinking about a scholar who could benefit from our accelerated program, please encourage them to reach out to their school counselor. Thank you, and let's continue to make a difference in the lives of our students, one scholar at a time.
Alright, next, we're gonna watch a video highlighting some of the outstanding things happening in Leander ISD.
Hello, it's National IT Professionals Week. I want to say thank you for all the dedication and expertise. Your hard work behind the scenes keeps everything running smoothly and we truly appreciate the countless hours you invest in solving complex problems and supporting our students and staff. Your efforts make a world of difference. Thank you all for everything that you do.
We're like yay, IT, sorry, sorry, Jason. We were all distracted. Oh my goodness. Okay. It's like if we couldn't give IT some love on a week like this, right? Come on. Alright, next is our Citizen Comments portion of the agenda. And before I invite my first speaker to the podium, we're gonna watch a short intro video.
Hi, my name is Isabel and I'm a senior at Glenn High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here at Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizen Comment Agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community. And the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read the guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please, conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Alright, I'm very proud that Leander ISD has policy where we have our students move to the top of Citizen Comments. So if any student sign up to speak, they're always first and we do have quite a few number of students tonight. So I'm gonna start with Speaker Number One.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Luke Collins. I'm a senior at Vista Ridge High School, a member of the Vista Ridge Band, and the proud committee chair of the Team Brock Junior Committee. We are an empowered group of middle school and high school students who lead initiatives aimed at improving the outcomes of children with cancer. Our mission is not only to raise awareness that kids do get cancer, but also ensure that these brave warriors feel supported and included in our community. Today, our junior committee is here not only to ask that the Board pass a resolution, but officially recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, but also encourage the schools to go gold in September in honor of children who have cancer in our community. This cause is one I feel strongly about. When I was a third grader at Religent Elementary, my good friend Brock Fleming was diagnosed with terminal brain cancer. He was out on a walk with his dog when he tripped and fell on a sidewalk. His parents rushed him to the hospital, worried that he had concussion, but it was something much, much worse. It was an inoperable brain tumor and there was no treatment. What people don't realize is that less than 4% of federal cancer research dollars goes to pediatric cancers, even though in the US, cancer is the number-one cause of death for children. So now, we change, how can you help change that? Spreading awareness that kids do get cancer is the first step in finding a cure and that's exactly what the Board will be doing when you pass our Gold Out Resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number One. Speaker Number Two?
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Holt and I'm a sophomore and soccer player at Vista Ridge High School. I joined the Team Brock Junior Committee because I know firsthand the fear of hearing that someone you love might have cancer. When my little brother Eli was just two years old, he started having seizures and doctors discovered a mass in his brain. Thankfully, the mass was benign and today Eli is a healthy third grader attending Aiken Elementary. But that terrifying experience ignited a deep desire in me to make a difference for kids facing similar situations. Cancer is a devastating disease, especially for kids. Each year, over 15,500 youth under the age of 19 are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, making it the lead cause of death by disease among children. While the five-year survival rate has improved from 58% in the mid-1970s to 85% today, more than two-thirds of survivors endure chronic health problems as a result of their treatment. Cancer doesn't discriminate. It affects children of all races, ethnicities, and backgrounds. Students, like adults, don't always understand why kids get cancer, but the Team Brock Junior Committee is here to offer support and empowerment. We believe that when something bad happens, it's essential to stand up, fight back, and drive change. And that's why we're here today, to raise awareness and advocate for the courageous children battling cancer in our schools. By passing our resolution recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, the Board is empowering all students, school, and students in Leander ISD to stand up to pediatric cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Two. Speaker Number Three?
Hi, my name is Ava Turbe. I'm an eighth grader at Stiles Middle School, the setter on my Spartans Green Team, and one of the newest members of the Team Brock Junior Committee. I am here because, like many kids across the United States, cancer has touched my school community. It is a very scary thing for a friend and classmate to be diagnosed with this devastating disease. You see them change so quickly from healthy and energetic to tired and sick. You just don't understand what's happening and neither do they. A key objective of the Team Brock Junior Committee is to ensure that these brave children feel valued and recognized and included in their community. Every year, our schools host Pink Out Sporting Events in October to support breast cancer awareness. But students our age don't get breast cancer, they get childhood cancer. So the goal is to host both. As a student at Stiles, I am super proud to tell you that the Spartans are leading the charge. For the second year, our school is hosting volleyball and football Gold Out Games where cancer kids in our communities are honored. By passing this resolution, you are showing pediatric cancer warriors that they are seen, that they matter, and they are supported by their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Speaker Number Four?
Hello, my name is Andrew Collins. I'm a sophomore at Vista Ridge and a Gold Out Chair for our Team Brock Junior Committee. In this role, it's my job to manage Gold Out Games across elementary, middle, and high schools, coordinate meetings with coaches, principals, and student council, present educational information about Gold Out Games, and help keep our committee organized as we bring new schools onboard. I am deeply committed with my work with Team Brock because of my personal connection with it. I am deeply committed with my work with Team Brock because of my personal connection to Brock Fleming. Our moms were college roommates, and our birthdays were just a month apart. We grew up together, and when Brock was diagnosed with brain cancer, we were both six years old and in the first grade. I couldn't grasp the severity of his illness, or why there wasn't a simple solution, while the doctors couldn't just give him some medicine to make him feel all better. I had so many questions, but because of my age, I lacked the words to express them. Cancer is a disease that doesn't just impact the child who is ill, it affects everyone around them. It spreads throughout our communities and touches us all. Working with Team Brock gives us, gives me the chance to do what I couldn't do as a young child. It allows me to fight back against pediatric cancer, make a tangible difference, and educate others on how they can join in the fight. It also enables me to support other kids at my school who are facing similar battles. By passing the resolution to go gold in September for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, you are giving grieving, confused young kids, like I once was, a chance to make a meaningful impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number four. Speaker number five?
Hello, I'm Luis Castellanos Lopez, and I'm proud to be a part of the Class of 2025 at Vista Ridge High School. I've had the privilege of attending school in Leander ISD from kindergarten all the way through high school, and I can confidently say there is no better district than Leander ISD. From my early days at Religent Elementary to Vista Ridge High School, Leander ISD has been teaching me and my fellow students how to be proactive, how to collaborate, and how to find our voice as leaders. Over the past year, our junior committee has been putting those lessons into action. We've been meeting with coaches, principals, and student councils to find ways to go gold for childhood cancer awareness. Our goal for each school is to take ownership of this initiative and make their campus shine gold throughout September. Here's what some of our schools are already doing. Vista Ridge is creating bulletin boards to explain what going gold means. They've also set up a gold star photo booth for their homecoming dance, where stars will display messages of hope and honor childhood cancer warriors. Rouse High School is hosting a Gold Out Day during their Homecoming Spirit Week. Their AV team is working on a video to raise awareness about childhood cancer, and they will cap off the week with a varsity football game on September 27th. Glenn High School is hosting a volleyball Gold Out Game tomorrow, Friday, September 20th, and has invited a Team Brock Cancer Mom to speak about the importance of childhood cancer awareness. By passing our resolution to officially recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, the district is continuing to grow proactive and collaborative leaders of tomorrow who will use their voice to make their communities a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number five. Next, speaker number six?
Good evening, my name is Carly Collins, and I'm an eighth grader at Stiles Middle School. I'm a libero on the Spartans volleyball team, and I'm honored to be a new member of Team Brock Junior Committee. As a young child, sadness and grief was filled with, I was filled with emotion when Brock Fleming was diagnosed with pediatric cancer. But over time, I discovered that talking about Brock, raising awareness that kids do get cancer, and working towards a cure helped me heal. Also, it also made me realize how important it is for other kids going through similar situations to have a voice, to be able to talk about childhood cancer. That's why passing the resolution to go gold in September for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is so important. By doing this, the board has encouraged the entire district to talk about childhood cancer. Our goal is for every school in LISD to go gold in September. This means all 30 elementary schools, nine middle schools, and six high schools coming together to support many students across the district affected by this devastating disease. To make this happen, we need the help of all teachers, coaches, and administrators. If your school is interested in participating, please visit teambrock.org for more information. Together, we can help raise awareness to finding a cure for cancer. Thank you for the board for letting me talk.
Thank you, Speaker number six. Thank you to our student speakers, and next, speaker number seven?
Wow, uh, did I push the right button? Wow, to be the adult who has to follow the students, my goodness, that is just so amazing. You know, my daughter was one of the people who really campaigned to make sure that students felt that they could come to this school district and give their speeches, give their points of view, support, and exercise student voice. Uh, and so today, I'm coming to you with a message for the larger school community, all the parents and everybody, uh, from our daughter. Uh, you know, it's election season, so that can sometimes get pretty ugly. So what we wish to do is just basically say, please to all of the adults, my daughter's 17, just missed it, right? Please exercise your vote with care and understand. We have our preferred candidates, and so we'll be doing what I just did, which is juggle, it's called juggling. So we're, we're training for the Austin Marathon, and, uh, we're gonna juggle it. Uh, over the next six or so weeks, we'll be juggling about 50 miles with our preferred candidates to show that we want to work as hard for them as they have worked for us. Now, there are some other people we have some critiques of who've done some things in the board meeting and out, but I want to focus on a positive message because I listen to my daughter, she's smarter than me, and better in a lot of ways, and just say, we have a fantastic district here. The students are worthy of our support. Let's make sure we choose candidates who fully support all the students and all the schools. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Speaker number seven. Next, speaker number eight?
Hi, my name's Celeste, I'm a parent of four daughters here in LISD. I just want to take this opportunity to express a huge public thank you to the incredible teachers and staff at New Hope High School. I'm so glad we got to hear them today, that was awesome. So I just want to thank them for everything they've done for my daughter, who just graduated last week, and she was the Class of 2025. The support and care that she received at New Hope was nothing short of life-changing, and I believe it's important to recognize the impact that they have, um, this campus that they had on her success. From day one, the staff took the time to truly understand my daughter's individual needs, ensuring that she received the personalized attention that allowed her to thrive. New Hope was able to help her because she needed to work at her own pace without the distractions of a regular high school setting, and that flexibility really made all the difference in her ability to stay focused and achieve her goals. The teachers there were just so patient and encouraging, and they went above and beyond. They recognized her potential, they nurtured it, they created the environment where she could flourish academically and personally. Um, what's really more remarkable is how the school is able to really meet the needs of so many different students. It's not just my daughter. Um, New Hope is a place where these students, who might not fit into a traditional school model, can find the success that they need. They tailor their approach to each individual, ensuring that those students have the opportunity to succeed on their own terms. Without New Hope and its dedicated staff, I'm sure my daughter would not have been able to reach this potential and this important milestone, so thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number eight. Next, speaker number nine?
There we go. Good evening, I, um, am, am very emotionally, um, impacted by what the Leander students had to say today. As many of you know, my spouse of 14 years fought terminal cancer for three years, and I lost him back in February. But seeing kids fight cancer at MD Anderson and facilities here in the Austin area, um, really had an effect on us. But what I'm happy about is that you all are empowering the students in our school district to come forward and speak to you and ask you to do these types of things. That's a very powerful message. The other thing I want to say, I know it's campaign season, and I know a lot of things get said back and forth. I am incredibly proud that we have the Leander School Trustees that we have, with the exception of one person. I found all of you to be great listeners, people that are passionate, that care intensely, um, for our schools and our families. And I hope that the voters will take great deal of research and prayer and reelect the two trustees running for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number nine. Next, speaker number 10?
Good evening, trustees, superintendent. My name is Gerald Prater, and I am a longtime, uh, parent of six kids that have gone through the district. And I came tonight to, um, just make a, a short comment and a suggestion on Agenda Item Number 7B2, which is the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument. It's actually not what you might think it's gonna be. I'm just going to, um, suggest that you consider whether or not you've included in that instrument input from the parents. Um, I, I recognize, I went through the, the slides, and I see you've got community-based accountability as a part of it. But I wanted to come tonight just to ensure that we are taking in some, somehow, that input also when evaluating. And it's not just for the superintendent, it's for all the trustees, because ironic, as I was reading this, this is the week of Constitution recognition. And, um, really, at the end of the day, our ultimate customers are the parents and the citizens, and that's what this week is really all about. So I just want to humbly and, um, gently offer that suggestion that you include that, or ensure it's included in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker number 10. That concludes our citizen comments. And now, we're gonna move over to our consent agenda items. Board members, do we have any motions related to consent agenda items?
Madam President, I move to sever item 5C.
All right, we will sever 5C. Hold on one second. Okay, um, let's go ahead and vote on the others, and then we'll address 5C. Do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. To, Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item 5C.
I second. Motion is made, and by Trish, second by Anna. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Trustee vote?
You want to talk to us about 5C? Yes, yes. Um, so when it happens that one of our contestants can't attend, and if we can't get somebody from the Legislative Committee who's able to attend, then we need to have another board member attend. Um, but we need to do an exception to our Board Operating Procedures. Board Operating Procedures are brilliantly designed because the hope is that carry-through for the Legislative Committee, although I can say that trustee Romans has been engaged, um, in several different events, so good job there. Um, but we've got to do a two-step, we've got to do a two-step here, and first, we have to approve the exception to our Board Operating Procedures. So I move that an exception be made to the requirement of a Legislative Committee member being selected as delegate to the Texas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly, as stated in the Board Operating Procedures.
I second.
That was already on. Trish makes motion, Anna seconds, all those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Yes, and, um, uh, as everybody knows, the Texas Association of School Board Delegate Assembly is where we get together with trustees all across the state of Texas and talk about what are our legislative priorities. Therefore, I move that Francesca Romans be appointed as Leander ISD alternate, alternate representative to the 2024 Texas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly.
I second.
Trish makes motion, Anna seconds, all those in favor? Six in favor, any oppose? One oppose, motion passes. All right, that is our consent agenda. Next, we'll move over to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this week, we had fantastic Carl's Celebration of all of our high schools, uh, in the South Pack. Just an incredible show of talent. The favorite part for me always of this event, though, is the way that the other high schools cheer for each other. Um, and it's really a, for me, a hashtag one LISD moment. It's, it's our family coming together to support each other no matter what. So this is Rouse High School, um, and then a, a quick shot from Cedar Park High School as well. Um, over time, in the district, I've met several kids that have made a big impact on me, and so, um, this is Oliver Hallwell. And in fourth grade, I met Oliver when he was, uh, in elementary school in the cafeteria one day. Um, and he declared to me that he was an author. I said, okay, this is gonna be good. Um, so he said to me, um, you know, life is like a piece of hard cheese that you find at the back of the refrigerator. He said, you just kind of have to grind through it. And so that really stuck with me. And so I had an opportunity this week to go visit Oliver, who's now a seventh grader at Cedar Park Middle School. And, uh, we had a great little conversation. But he said to me, I have a new analogy for you. He said, he said, life is kind of like a piece of sandpaper. He said, it's a little rough, but you can also tear through it pretty easily, so. I think a little bit of wisdom from a seventh grader at Cedar Park Middle School. Um, and then you've met this young man, uh, this is Eli Ponse, and, uh, I've highlighted him several times, but I got the privilege of going to hang out with him a little bit at Reed Elementary School. Um, and he is the Pokemon King, let me just tell you. He, uh, was very quick to haul out those Pokemon cards and show me exactly what was what, and tell me how to trade and not lose, and do all the things. And so now, I'm almost a Pokemon expert, but not quite. I won't be trading anytime soon. Not with that little guy, he's, uh... All right, as you heard from Luke, and Sebastian, and Ava, and Andrew, and Luis, and Carly, um, that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And so, we want to take a moment just to recognize the approximately 30 Leander ISD students and their families here in the district who are facing a multitude of challenges in this realm. However, it is stunning to me that through this important cause, we have witnessed the remarkable student empowerment that we, that we saw tonight. Um, so as we saw the dedication of Team Brock Junior Committee, students are willing to engage elected officials, student organizations, athletic teams, to raise awareness for what they think is an important issue. But the momentum doesn't stop there, and so, as we look at these photos, um, of Cedar Park High School's Gold Out Event, we have band members, cheerleaders, football players, all passionately involved in this initiative and showcasing their support. So even our student media groups are stepping up, capturing the essence of these events, and then amplifying that message as we go out. And so this student voice becomes a very powerful moment across the district. And each of these moments demonstrates our collective support for the students and the families affected by pediatric cancer, unless we forget the empowered staff who are committed to creating plans that ensure the continuity of learning. It's stories like this one that weave together the tenants of our strategic plan, making a difference, one student at a time. We had the great good fortune, um, this week also of accepting a $15,000 check from the Assistance League of Austin, and they came out, uh, to share this with us. A great moment. These are energetic young ladies, um, who are all retired. But they do fantastic work, uh, and they got wind of some of the balances that were existing on our students' cafeteria accounts, and they decided they were gonna do something about that. And so that $15,000 check pays off all the current balances that are sitting in our cafeteria accounts at this time. So a huge shout-out to the Assistance League of Austin, um, for their grand support of our students. So turning now to safe and innovative learning environments, we want to give you a quick update on the baseball and softball field artificial turf projects that are happening across the district. Um, this is actually not one of them. So this is Glenn High School. And it's here for a reason, because it already has artificial turf on it, and so, since it's our newest high school... And so since it's our newest high school, that was part of the construction project. But the other five do not, and so we wanted to give you a quick update of what that looks like. So this involves the removal of all the natural grass on both the baseball and softball fields. And then... And then they come in and put down the drainage and the artificial turf. So because of the drainage, we have to go through TCEQ processes to make sure that we have all of that in good shape. At Rouse High School, this is just one example. This is the project that's the furthest along. And so that you can see, we're almost complete there. We're hoping to be completely done in late October. And we're excited to showcase the beautiful field that is going in out there at Rouse High School. Two beautiful fields, actually, baseball and softball. And then a quick update on the others. Cedar Park High School is in permitting right now. We hope to have completion there in January, as well as Vista Ridge High School. Leander High School, they're just doing the demo and excavation work right now. We hope that one to be finished by November 30th. And then Vandergrift High School, we're still working with the city of Austin on permitting. And so that one will probably only be finished next summer as we work through all of those processes. All right. You heard from a couple of alumni from New Hope High School earlier today. We wanted to share this great story of a couple of alumni from Leander High School, class of 2016 and 2017. And these two young men are working right now at Leander High School on the master plan redesign project as electricians. And so that stemmed from this classroom, which is that electrical trades classroom at Leander High School where these guys got their start and learned about the work that they were doing. And now I'm going to go back to this one. So this is part of that Phase One master plan redesign work, tilt wall going up as they move athletic facilities around at Leander High School. Of course, it's challenging because we're doing this work as school is going on. So we appreciate everyone's patience with all of the work that's happening, not only at Leander High School, but at several of our other schools as well. But certainly going to be worth it in the long run, and we're very excited about the progress they're making. And then just to reiterate some comments we've heard already, National Voter Registration Day coming up. We are trying to develop a culture of voting. We want you to be a voter. And so we encourage you to make sure that you get registered by the deadline for the November election, which is October 7th of 2024. So make sure you go get registered. Make sure that you do your research, that you educate yourself about everything that's going to be on your ballot specifically, so that when you get in the ballot box, you know what you're doing. And then we encourage you to please just go vote. Be a voter. All right. That's all I got.
Question about the Vandergrift turf. Is it just the permit that's holding that up?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that going to impact any of the athletics on that campus this year? Or is everything staying as it is right now?
Yeah, so we should have all the other campuses done by baseball season. And we asked those coaches and teams, do you want us to take the risk and execute and try to get ready by baseball season, or do you want us to wait? And they all said, just pull the trigger, we'll take the chance. The permitting with the city of Austin is just too complicated down at Vandergrift, so we don't have any choice but to wait until the summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to move a couple of items around tonight. We're going to start with Item 7C2, which is Discussion of the Long Range Planning Committee.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. I am here tonight actually with a new partner in this work. Jeremy Trimble is our Chief Operations Officer, and he is jumping in and learning quickly what all we have been engaged in. So I'm excited to be partnering with him in this work. So tonight, we are here just to provide an update on the work of the Long Range Planning Committee, and I'll just jump right in. So as you all know, and just as a reminder to our wider community, the Long Range Planning Committee actually started after a failed bond in 2021, because we were faced with how do we address the needs that we have without the bond funds for new buildings? And so at Board Direction, the Long Range Planning Committee was established. At that time, it really was focused in, it was totally made up of, sorry, of board members and administration. And so the committee began its work, and as you follow along on the journey, you can see part of that work was actually looking at district-wide secondary rezoning. How could we be thoughtful and strategic in shifting students around to make better use of our facilities? And then actually explored the notion of repurposing some of our campuses to address space needs. We then actually go into the bond election of May in 2023, and that did pass. At the time, we also were directed by our board to expand the Long Range Planning Committee to involve more staff and community voice. And at that time, we expanded it to 65 members. And I'll remind everybody about the composition here in just a little bit. We did have an approval of secondary zoning. There was a lot of work that was happening around that time. And then since then, the Long Range Planning Committee has met every month of last school year, starting in the summer and going into last June. And so just, we're going to give an update of their work. So did want to just highlight again for everyone, this is our current long-range plan as it stands, that that was actually approved back in April of '23. And just to highlight some of the components on here, you see part of it, it does have looking at new builds, where they fall on the timeline. As you can see, that is actually out of date, right? So yes, we did open Number 30 with Heysel opening this year, but we are definitely not looking to open 31 next year, and we have since added an early childhood center on here. So you can see there's definitely things on here that need to be addressed. What we also have on the long-range plan is at the bottom, this notion of ongoing conversations, looking at how do we optimize buildings? And so what are those factors and considerations? And you see that that falls under the timeline the whole way. But the most important part that I would like to highlight are the parameters that guide all of this work. And so I'm going to pull that out a little bit bigger. So two main components that you see here, the one, which is that primary one of strengthening the student experience. And really, as we think about, and we've heard a lot here even tonight about the student experience, and we know that that guides everything. And so how do we, through our long-range plan, strengthen that experience by establishing long-term stability where we can, access to choice options like New Hope or other options, and honor the neighborhood school concept for schools while we still can meet the long-range plan? The balance of that is to prioritize fiscal responsibility. We must be good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. And so how do we maximize usage of district facilities through strategic rezoning, which we've already talked about and we're living out right now, and optimizing opportunities, and looking at down the road, how do we defer timing of future construction? So those are the big parameters that help guide all of this work. So the charter, I just wanted to pull out a couple of pieces of the charter. So this is the mission, and you can see what was the original intent from the mission on that charter when it started in January of 2022, but then how that transitioned once we did expand. And you can see definitely that this committee serves as an advisory, in an advisory role, wanting to make sure that it does align to the strategic plan, that we are utilizing that 10-year plan as a framework, we're engaging in shared learning around different components and programs, which we definitely did this past year. And then also looking at that communication, and how do we have that reciprocal communication within our community as we think about long-range plan? Did talk about that we have expanded the committee, and so this is the composition of our committee. And I'm excited, we've just actually invited our new members, and we are sitting at 65 yet again. So it is, it's a great group. We actually have our first meeting for the school year next week, so I'm excited to meet our new members. But the work that has happened this past year has been incredible. And just a shout out to our students who have been active participants and talk about student voice. I mean, it's just been phenomenal to watch. One thing I do want to highlight is that we have been very intentional about making sure that the overall composition is balanced for all parts of our district. So we make sure that there's representation from all feeder patterns, also looking at elementary, middle, and high, trying to balance that. Obviously, it all depends on who consistently comes to the meetings, but we do definitely start out with a balance on that. Okay. So let's talk about the work that the group engaged in last year. So one, this was a diverse group that was coming together to engage in some really hard work. And so we spent a lot of time really talking about our norms and how are we going to operate together? And I will say that we have leaned back on those norms numerous times through this work. They engaged in work to refine the charter to make sure that we were all clear about what was the work before us. One of the very first things that they tackled was a recommendation on size for the future elementary schools. A question that was posed to them was, as we look at future sites, do we consider 800 students, which has been our standard, or 1,000, knowing that maybe there's a little bit more of financial savings down the road? When you actually looked at it and they weighed all of the options, it really didn't save us a whole lot, and they leaned back into that student experience. So the recommendation coming from this committee that was then presented to the Board of Trustees was staying at an 800-size school. And so a huge, huge piece of work that they've done. Then we jumped into evaluating the growth in the northern portion. So they really dug into the numbers, trying to understand where was the growth, who was comprised of that? And through that work, there was a recommendation of building an early childhood center. We have an incredible program that is just growing, and what we're seeing, that is especially in the north. And so that was a recommendation that came out of that committee, came before you as a Board of Trustees for approval, and that site is in design phase. So super excited about that. Along with that, as we were in those conversations, you'll see there, their recommendation is about exploring optimization in the central portion of our district as we think about a new site for New Hope High School and Leo, our Leander Extended Opportunity Center. You heard even tonight the incredible work that happens at New Hope High School. New Hope High School is constricted by the space, and we know that if we could open that up, we would actually be able to reach more students. And so wanting to find a site that does help to meet more students. But we also know, and the committee debated this, is right now, New Hope is in the northern part of our district, which does make it a barrier for people who are further south. And so the recommendation from the committee is to explore, how could we optimize maybe another site to expand New Hope? Same thinking there with our Leo Center with, again, it's in the northern part of our district, and as students, if they do end up having to go there, then how do we help prevent barriers for transportation and just for ease for families? So another big recommendation coming out of that committee. They did evaluate the elementary zoning. We did do zoning around what is for Heysel, and so they, one of the parts of the process is for them to look at, does that zoning actually meet the parameters of the long-range plan? And so that was another big piece that they tackled. They did begin drafting, what could adjustments to the long-range plan look like? Really, again, trying to understand what are the numbers, where's the need, what are the constraints within our system? And so they engaged in a lot of work around that through conversations, recommendation to explore open enrollment. So again, as we think about where we have pockets of shrinking populations, one way that could be addressed is to actually open our district for out-of-district transfers. And so a recommendation from that committee is to explore that deeper, to see, is that not a way that we can help fill up our buildings? And then, then there was subcommittee work, which took on a life of its own. My goodness, they engaged in so much work, and not only in the committee meetings, but outside of the committee meetings. So we had three subcommittees. Facility optimization was the first one, and their big charge was trying to look and identify what are the factors that need to be considered if we are going to look at doing something different with the building, if we're going to optimize it in a different way? And they, it's incredible work, they produced actually a matrix to actually help determine which facilities would be recommended for optimization, knowing it can't just be about enrollment, that there has to be other factors that we have to look at. And then, because that's how they are, they went even further and developed a process to evaluate which facility best meets the given need. So for instance, if we're saying that New Hope High School needs a facility, then what of our current facilities would best match and meet those needs? So two great processes that we're going to be able to lean on as we continue this work. We also had a Schools of Choice Subcommittee that researched and drafted policy around schools of choice, and that is actually going to be going before the Policy Committee. I'm getting on the schedule here in the fall to bring that forward for consideration. And then finally, we had another subcommittee around community conversations. So how do we think about that communication plan for going out and talking to our community, specifically around facility optimization? We know that that is going to be, a big piece of the work is having those conversations with the communities, and how do we draft and be thoughtful about what that looks like? So even with all of that, we still had lots of lingering questions that were unanswered, things that we definitely tried to tackle, but it's still, they're lingering, it's work in progress. So one is this notion of whether or not we combine Leo and New Hope High School. So as you think about moving to the central portion of our district, if you think about finding another facility for these two schools, there was a great debate amongst our committee about, do we have them in separate facilities, or is there an opportunity to combine? And quite honestly, it came down to the two parameters that are in our long-range plan. So one, thinking about the strengthening of the student experience, you've heard what New Hope is trying to do, what they are doing, right? You hear that, and the opportunity to expand that. And what you haven't heard, but the committee has heard, is some of the work that Leo is also, the staff there is doing to rebrand that image. And so thinking about what happens to that student experience if you put them together, and do they lose their identities that they are trying to establish? On the other side, the other parameter is the fiscal responsibility. And so as you think about looking at spaces, technically, we could put them into one facility, and would that be more fiscally responsible? So that was definitely the debate that the group was going through. And the very last meeting, we were meeting in June, and I finally said, okay, just give me a pulse check. Tell me where we are, and it literally was 50/50. The group is divided. And so that is very much a lingering question for us. Another question around comprehensive secondary schools versus innovative academies. So one, I want to highlight the term innovative academies. That actually came from the Schools of Choice Policy Committee, because they, as they... Because they, as they were really researching and, and talking about just our current state and as we think about what is it that we are trying to brand here? They actually are suggesting the term innovative academies instead of schools of choice. Kind of gets into some other narratives that are, that are out around us. So innovative academies is the new term for us. So, so this notion of comprehensive secondary schools, so could it be, and you know, we know, we have incredible high schools, comprehensive high schools. We have incredible comprehensive middle schools. So is that what we want to do as we think about further down the road for the, meeting the needs of our secondary students? Or are there, is there something different there that we want to do? So there's lots of options. We actually did a field trip with the committee and went and saw a couple. We'd like to do some more to really dig into that a little bit more. I see you wanting, nope, not yet. Okay. So, so that's definitely a lingering question there.
Okay, then I was just waiting for you to finish that part before I jump in. But I, I think it comes back, like Sarah said, to the two parameters again, which is thinking about student experience and what does that look like? We have great student experience in our comprehensive high schools. You witness that all the time. But we also have this great experience for other kids inside our innovative academies that exist already, New Hope High School and, and the others. And so thinking about as we create in the future, is it possible to do a different kind of student experience that caters to different kinds of students? But then you have to balance that again with fiscal responsibility. So building comprehensive high schools and middle schools is very expensive because you're putting a lot of additional facilities in there for all the extracurriculars and all of those things. And so if you build innovative academies, is there a way to do it in a much more fiscally responsible way, but still achieve that student experience? So I think that was part of the conversation we had.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Because as you think about, we would need another stadium if it was a comprehensive high school again. So just, and that adds a lot more as well. Okay, so then the other bullet, I'm only on bullet number three there. So the timing of elementary builds. So as we, we look at the projections, thinking about when, when are we going to open thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three? So that was definitely a lingering question. How to best optimize campus facilities? So we, I talked about the Subcommittee work and there is incredible processes and matrix and a process that has been developed. That is still things that we need to flesh out and what would, what are some options around that? And then again, the open enrollment. So yes, there's the recommendation to explore that. And that is a, a piece that we really need to dig into further as to what does that actually look like here? Go ahead.
And they're connected to each other. So you, you have to think very carefully about if you do open enrollment, then what does that do to optimization in other parts of the district? And what is the timing of that and how? Because we've never done open enrollment before, how does that, you know, how do we make sure that we know what that's going to do before we do anything else?
I'm not sure if this is the right time or if we should wait till the end. I have lots of questions. And so you tell me, I would love to kind of, first, I want to say, wow, that's a lot. So big kudos to this committee for, you know, this is the only lingering questions and they were able to contribute so much. I would like to kind of have a conversation about each of these lingering questions here, but I'm wondering, do you want to go through everything first and then come back? If I can, just because there's a slide coming next that I think helps for that conversation as well. Perfect, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, and yes, Dr. Gearing, thank you for pointing out about the timing. I just actually had a conversation with a parent this week around this notion. If we open, if we open enrollment, but yet we optimize and do something different with the campus, then how do we know which one is actually helping or hurting? Or are we going to have to go back and undo something? So it's a great point. Okay, so the other thing that I just wanted to highlight was just our overall space considerations. So this is definitely a part of this conversation as we think about, what are the things that we, we need to plan for now and in the future? So we've already talked about the space for New Hope High School in the central portion of our district. We've already talked about space for Land or Extended Opportunity Center somewhere in the central portion. Again, thinking about early childhood centers, we have one that is going to be going in, in twenty-twenty-six. Right, Jeremy? And, and so, but we know that's not going to meet the needs of all of our early childhood babies. So we definitely need, are going to need some more. Space for a future police department. So, you know, as, as you all know, under your direction, we are building out a police department. And there are requirements, there are requirements for the space that in order to be licensed. So we're going to need that. Space for administration, while that is not necessarily directly affect, impacting student experience, what I would say, it impacts our staff experience, our empowered staff. We are sitting on top of each other. Space for professional learning. As we have been talking extensively in the boardroom about professional learning and investing in our teachers, having space to adequately do that. Right now, our biggest space is on the northern side, near Central Office, and it does not even hold that many people. And so as we think about, how do we adequately support our staff? That's just another consideration. And then overall, just space for elementary, middle and high school students. We continue to grow and so we definitely need to make sure that we have space there. So that does bring us to, coming back to those lingering questions, and I'll open that up for you definitely. Madam President, those are some of the lingering questions that will help guide some of this work, but definitely wanting to hear from our Board of Trustees as we go forward.
All right, I think this is probably going to be a big discussion. And so, and I have things I want to say about all of them, but I'm going to start with one. And we'll start with the first lingering. You said that people were divided. And I'd like to know more about, you know, kind of what, what was the, the firm on this side, what was the firm on this side? And yeah, I think I'd like to kind of hear that. And then tonight, you know, we had our, our New Hope School present and we have our New Hope Principal here. And so I'd also like to kind of hear some input from him on, on the situation as well, right? But I'd love to hear what the committee thought about both, both positions of being together or not.
Absolutely. And if Dr. Courier does want to come on up, he's actually a member of the Long Range Planning Committee. So he has been a part of these, these conversations and can definitely add more context. But I will go, go back to, it, it really does come down to, you know, one, thinking about fiscal responsibility, this notion of they are smaller schools. You know, Leo is not one where we don't want to like expand it. It's not that we're looking to add more students there. It is a smaller campus, but it does need to be moved to the central portion of our district. Whereas New Hope High School, we are looking to expand that. But even then, as you look at the numbers, you could put them both into a building, into one building combined, even if you made separate entrances and things like that. So that was, that was part of the real advocacy for combining them is that you could actually do that and not have to disrupt two buildings. It would just be one. Keeping them separate, really the advocacy around that was around the identities that both schools are establishing or have established and looking to further refine. And so if you combine them, does that impact that, those identities? And then actually become a deterrent for people who might consider those? So Dr. Curry, I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Sure, this did get talked about a fair bit during long range, especially towards the last few months leading into June. So I had a good opportunity to talk to the community members and the students that are participating in long range. And like Dr. Grissom just said, it's, it's kind of between the, you can do it, but should we do it kind of concept, right? And so the community kind of asked, they said, well, what are those deciding factors? And so if you have a disciplinary alternative education placement center, D A E P or Leo in our district, a lot of times, students there are receiving a consequence for an action related to the student code of conduct. And the intent there is that they can keep in pace with their education and return then back to their home campus and continue on with their cohort. Because we need to be able to reflect and adjust our actions and things like that through time. So the question I ask, is that what you heard from the New Hope students tonight? And so whenever we were talking within long-range planning, the question came down to, would it become a deterrent if they were both in the same building? Because if some community members, we've got forty thousand plus kids, right? Tons of people in our community. If community members aren't fully aware of exactly what New Hope is and they're spliced together, we could go through these changes and end up with something that the community wouldn't necessarily understand and it doesn't have the outcome of expansion because people aren't applying. Now, I don't know if that will happen. But the people that I have talked to about it can reasonably say, I think that might occur. Now, part of what we're talking about here with Leo and New Hope also, and I really want to stress this, it's going to be very important to make it more accessible for all. Right now, in its current location, if you look at our entire two hundred square miles of the district, it is kind of more northern, as Dr. Grissom said. So these considerations are important. So this is kind of a long-winded answer to your question of, how did we get here and how did we weave through all of these things? Because we are, we know we need to look for something in the center. We've got that down because it feeds everywhere, because it's a connective tissue for the district, if you will. But what does that look like to be fiscally responsible? But at the same time, make both of those campuses be able to continue to cultivate the culture that they're building inside. Leo's doing really good things. Students used to actually just sit inside of classes. Now they actually change classes and all this stuff, just like after comprehensive campuses. So that way, reintegration and, and coming back to your campus is not as jarring. And it'll allow them to continue to operate, allow us to continue to operate. And the other piece to consider about this is there's other components in Texas Education Code that specifically say that students that are attending a D A E P facility cannot cross paths with a Gen. Education peer. So they're not supposed to like, you know, go to football games and stuff like that while they're under disciplinary placement. So if you think about two buildings, it's two schools inside of a building, and we could design walls and things, but I'm also thinking about just, what will the operational aspects look like? Because once we make that decision, we are locked into that decision going forward for a period of time. And so it's the balance of the fiscal responsibility and the understanding of trying to, you know, utilize multiple assets and where does that intersection point come in alignment with culture?
I, I would love to hear from Leo as well. I would love to hear from the committee that worked on the optimization, but I know we don't have time to do all that tonight. I think you have very well laid out some of those complexities that that committee and the committee, I mean, I, so I was on the Facility Optimization Subcommittee and my job was to listen and not say anything unless they ask me a question like, like, does the board do this part or this part? And it's like, y'all do that part. The time they spent and the way in which the process was developed, they had certain parameters and things they had to think of. And I think it's important to also hear that as well. Because I, I don't think the answer is, you see, I think what Sarah's explaining is very much the complexities of, of how you try in a district with two hundred square miles, but you want two schools in the central area and you need them both somewhere, you know, nearby in the central area. How does that work? And so I would love to dig down more in this. I do wonder, is as we look at those, is there something where we could divide it up and say, okay, the committee's made a recommendation. Let's go ahead and continue what we started tonight and say, the committee did some work on this. The committee did some work on this. They did the, well, we have the Facility Optimization Subcommittee made a recommendation. You can take it, do your vote.
Chris, did they make a recommendation?
Yeah, the Facility Optimization Subcommittee did make a recommendation.
Oh, I thought they were divided.
No, the committee was divided. That's, that the committee as a whole.
The Subcommittee made a recommendation, took it to the whole committee and then the committee was divided. Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't following.
Yeah, so, yeah, so my question is, is like, some of this, I'm like, well, let's, let's have that discussion, bring it forward. I, I don't know if, at this point, the committee, if they're split, all right, do a consensus grammar, find out whatever, but let's go ahead and, let's move and, and, and start figuring out what we're going to do. Because I just don't know if we can keep on a whirl, whirlpool going around. So when I look at these, I'm like, okay, what is it that we need to move on quickly as a board? Because there are decisions, like, there are ramifications. We know this is a board, right? That there is declining enrollment in some of our campuses. What are we going to do? So I'm like, okay, open enrollment. We've got to get that decision made. If we're saying the committee recommended it, okay, move that to admin. Let's go ahead and get admin to draft something and bring back to us, right? Like, let's, let's go, let's, let's start doing some of these things. And then how best to optimize facilities? The committee, the Subcommittee made a suggestion, recommendation with their matrix and their pieces. All right, then y'all do your vote, get it up here, let's get it to admin, work it and come back with recommendations. Like, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we, how do we get things moving at this point? Does that make sense?
Chris would like to say something. And so I wanted to make sure we pass the mic to her since her mic button doesn't light up here. And so I'm pointing there and y'all are like, what are you pointing at? I'm so sorry, we're looking at her at the screen right in front of y'all's desk, like, if she wants to say something, so.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I am so thankful that the Long Range Planning Committee put forth all the effort that they have. I think that they've done an amazing amount of work and I can't say enough about the commitment of everyone that is there. It was truly inspiring to see, especially all of you involved. I just wanted to be really pleased to meet a New Hope parent of a kid who graduated this entire year early. New Hope really great for her and I can't say enough to think about it. I agree with Clay regarding the, the image or the, sort of the, the idea of what New Hope is and that it's grown in such a way that is so positive and moving those students forward in a way that works with them and how can they really accomplish the work that they need? I think their identity is so special that it's one of those things that I think needs to be suffered. And just speaking as a parent who, like I said, had, had a child enrolled and graduated from New Hope and how special that is, I think it's really important that we recognize the differences between you and New Hope and that we keep in mind that they go for good reasons. And so I just wanted to put that in the world and that'll be all for me. Thanks.
So I, I, I agree with Clay. I have a question though, and this is for the board and for the community. New Hope High School is our first school of choice in our district. It really is our first school of choice. Innovative Academy. When we're talking about these innovative academies, are we going to consider another innova- innovative academy to partner up with Leo? Like, why are we considering this one, our first school of choice, first innovative academy to be partnered at Leo? Like, there should be something to be said that this, we're providing this entire different learning environment for students and that's what we talk about as a board all the time. How can we meet our students where they're at? As someone who graduated from a school like New Hope, I can tell you right now, it changed my life. I was not a bad kid. I just needed something that was going to work for me and a fat, and we heard it tonight. We heard from our former student how the perception in the community is no hope when that is completely false. That school gives our students hope and a sense of purpose. So I am one hundred percent against combining the two. Because if anything, we have an opportunity to give more students more opportunities. But also, let's remember y'all, we had a virtual academy here due to COVID and we saw that parents craved and students wanted that different learning environment. And here we have an innovative academy that is And here we have an innovative academy that is fitting that model for our students. And we know in the state of Texas, there are online charter schools. Why are we willing to lose those students when we have our first innovative academy that is gonna provide opportunities for those students that can't get in a comprehensive high school? So, my question though, because I did not sit on the Subcommittee, I was part of the School of Choice Subcommittee. Did this Subcommittee get a presentation on what New Hope High School is? Or was it just their own perceptions, what they found in the community? That's, I'm trying to like, I, again, I wasn't part of those conversations. But I'm just, I'm wondering, because, you know, I got, I got to be there for that big meeting where the group as a whole was divided and it was really intense. And I felt like a lot of it really was down to misinformation, I'll be honest with you. Because this school is amazing, it is not a negative thing for our students. It is really a truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we, how, we've been offering it for how long? Like, we need to be honoring that.
I, I, um, this, you know, we, we create these committees and we get different recommendations and this committee did a lot of different things, you know? And a lot of those things have already been voted on and, and moved forward. And, um, on this issue, I do think it's interesting that there was a Subcommittee that then came and brought that to the rest of their committee and the rest of their committee was divided on that issue. I think that as a board, we, we do need to, you know, sometimes you're in those positions where you're gonna have tough conversations and, and make decisions. I was speaking to someone recently that was, was a part of that committee and I asked, we were talking about innovative learning campuses, I'm really gonna try that. And we were talking about, um, her enthusiasm for STEM Innovative Learning Campus. And I said, do you think that STEM Innovative Learning Campus should be partnered in, in the same building with Leo as well? And she was like, oh, no, that's completely different. And I was just like, okay. And I, New Hope is an innovative learning campus and, and I do think that, um, I love how that perception, I remember when I first started at Leander, you know, getting involved with Leander ISD and there were all these ideas that New Hope and Leo were the same thing. And people would, and use them interchangeably all the time. I'm right, I mean, those of us that have been here for a long time, we know that. I see administrators in the back like, yes, people always did that. And you don't hear that anymore. We're moving away from that because, like, I feel like New Hope is really building this culture of, we're innovative learning campus and, and it's just providing opportunities for students that need something different. And I think, I think putting them together in one building, it takes us back to, this is all just the same thing. And, and they have different goals, they're, they're different programs. I think that there are ways that we look at different campuses and different locations that we have in the central district. And there's things that we can do that can honor both of the things of being fiscally conscious to our, to our district and honoring our students and honoring what we say is fundamentally important is neighborhood, community schools, right? And part of creating this culture of our schools. And I think we would be doing a huge disservice to, to both of these programs if we went backwards into New Hope, Leo, same difference. It's not same difference, it's completely different. And, um, the thought of going backwards to where we were fifteen years ago and the conversations around that, it just would make me really sad. So, um, I'm, I think that, um, these are lingering questions because they were big and they were hard. And, um, and I think now is a place where I said, okay, I think we should go through these lingering questions and, and do what we're doing and have conversations. And I really want to hear how everybody, you know, everyone on the board feels about it. But I will be very adamant that I, I'm not supportive of putting these two together. I don't think that, um, their charter is the same. And, um, I think that they, they have a different goal. And I think it's important that we give them, that we give New Hope the space to continue to grow and be beautiful and magnificent and have room to bring in more students that need something a little bit different.
So, oops, sorry. Not to pile on on that New Hope, um, Leo conversation, but when we were discussing the bond, or the bond package earlier, I had expressed that Leo students and New Hope students were, like, what message would we be sending if we put them in the same facility? And it seemed to me at the time that it was, if you're going to mix or merge schools like that, it would be more, more New Hope and early college high school. And thinking about New Hope being in the center, but that would keep New Hope even further north. But if New Hope is in the center, there is an opportunity for ACC Cedar Park just down the road from wherever it might be. But was there any discussion about, if they're not together, what could that look like? Because sometimes, if people could see what that alternative looks like and, um, then, and then they might be, just, not just saying, oh, they're together or they're not together, but was there any discussion on what that alternative could look like?
That's a, a great question. We did talk about that there are other needs and that we could, you know, maybe put Leo and then some professional learning space or office spaces or, you know, that there's definitely options there. What I will say is that there's more work to be done on that and to really look at all of those space considerations and what, what could, what would we recommend would, that we would put together in a, in a building?
Yeah, and just a reminder that that's the situation right now, right? So, at Leo Center right now, we have Leo and professional learning all in one space.
I just have two quick comments and then that's it, sorry. So, um, there was a discussion about open enrollment. Would that be targeted at specific schools, not like, say, open enrollment into the district, but you go?
We're gonna go there after the Leo conversation.
Okay, all right.
So, Clay, will you, because I think it's important, our other committee members aren't here. And then I have something I need to say about Leo, because I just, I think some things got off track and I want to make sure I say that too, because we don't have somebody here from Leo. But can you tell us about your experience when you came to this Facility Subcommittee and they were asking questions about New Hope? Can you tell us what questions they were asking and what that process looked like for the committee that, for the members that weren't here? Like, what did they go through as they were wondering what to do next? What were the questions in your experience?
So, we did, uh, talk to the Long Range Plan Committee several times about this. Whenever we first started the conversations, it was clear that there was just a lot of unknowns, to be frank. There was a lot of, and there was a lot of questions about what New Hope is, how long it's been around, what kind of, you know, who it serves, what is the culture? Community members did mention various things that they had heard, some of those things have been echoed tonight. And so, the big questions that people were wondering is, what, what is this gonna look like if we scale up, right? So, if we make New Hope bigger, if we scale this thing, what is it gonna look like at the end of the day? So, we gave everybody some context that we essentially have eighty seats right now. That we got about two hundred and fifty apps a year. So, we're sitting in the northern area of the district. And central, who knows what that's gonna look like, I do not have a crystal ball. But I have talked to counselors and principals in the south and they have indicated that distance has been a considerable factor for students whenever they're choosing to do it. Because now you also have driving time, work schedules, all the other things just go into the mix. So, they needed to know about those pieces. We took a tour too, right? Did we do that this last year? Oh, okay. Yeah, we, I've done some tours with some other folks. Um, we talked with, um, I came in multiple times and gave them year-over-year data, also showing what it looked like two years ago, how the numbers are actually increasing over the last three years with the culture change. We're seeing that our students are graduating faster and so they're seeing that piece. They asked kind of what other things could be paired, some of those conversations kind of came up too. Um, we did talk about some of those offices or, you know, just some of the other district items that are listed there as it's structured now. They talked about what that would look like to the community, how that would feel to the local community if we, if we move around. And so, we've talked through some of those conversations and, and making sure that, that everything would get massaged together and, and, and piece together very well. By and large, the reason they were split at the end, when we started, there's a piece that's kind of important, I guess, for my consideration at least, is, the big piece when we began was, let's put them all together, put them all together. That was kind of the mantra from the beginning. So, it was as we worked through this process and as we provided more information, that's where the needle kept eking over, over and over to the left. Because people finally started understanding the campus. One of the pieces we have about New Hope is we don't have that many ambassadors to talk about it because it is a smaller campus. And so, the biggest piece is information right now, making sure everybody knows what's going on and that way we can make these informed decisions.
So, um, and I also remember when you came to the Facility Optimization Subcommittee because they heard from you and, and you were talking about the project, some of the things that New Hope and Leo were working on together because Leo is also about credit recovery for students. And y'all are doing some really good things. I also remember the discussion of what were the needs that New Hope has? And I think the Facility Subcommittee said, well, okay, if you need a nurse, do I do a nurse on Leo and New Hope? How could we do it? And I think there are good discussions of like, do they have to be right next to each other? Could they be further out, all those things? And maybe they're not, maybe they're all separate. And if that's what the will of the board is, that's fine. I just want to make sure we, we honor the fact that there was a lot of discussions. The Subcommittees were looking at things like, where's the parking? And what are we gonna do with teachers and what do we do with campus police? And how do we do two facilities and all the cause? So, there was a lot of discussions. Really, I think that's why it's important not to try to figure this all out right now, tonight. I think it's something that I would like for more information. I think I would like the board to be able to have like, an actual, you know, discussion on this and, and then we can move forward. But I would like to make and correct one thing, because I got really upset for a bit and I, I don't, I don't think the board meant it this way, but somebody was saying, well, I wasn't a bad kid. I'm not gonna tell you that I think all Leo kids are bad kids. I think they've made bad choices, but they're good kids, right? And I think Leo used to have a, a, um, a culture or, or maybe, um, when you went in and you, and you turned it and we did, there was not a good environment there. And I think every kid is worth attention and time and even when those babies make really bad choices and they find themselves in Leo, that we can find a way to help them get their credit recovery and get back on the right track. And sometimes those kiddos, sometimes, I'm not saying all the time, sometimes those kiddos are in Leo, it's because the traditional environment didn't work for them. And so, we have our babies who are in Leo who maybe come to that realization and then go to New Hope too. And I think that's beautiful. And as a community, I hope we can continue to talk about how we help our kiddos in Leo make good choices going forward and support them. Thank you.
I, I wanted, oh, go ahead, Chris. Oh, uh, I'll be, I'll be quick. I just wanted, I just wanted to add a little bit to the discussion about what we think should happen next. And I want to get Jeremy's take on this because I feel like that's not necessarily a long-range plan, Planning Committee Recommendation Decision, whatever you want to call it. I feel like that's gonna be a district decision and we can have recommendations from Long Range Plan, but it's really up to the board to say, administration, go make this happen. I, I appreciate that Leo is a temporary space for a kiddo that made a bad decision. I don't think that it's something that, um, obviously, there's no bad kids, there's bad decisions. I totally agree with that. I think that, um, you know, the idea is for that to be a temporary space for them and that New Hope has a completely different focus and drive about it. And I think that making sure that we are honoring what the culture is at, at both places is important. So, I just wanted to know if Jeremy had any thoughts on where we're headed with, you know, facility-wise, what we're looking at and decisions that need to be made and maybe timing of all those things?
Yes, so what I will go back to is, we talked about there's, there's five bullet points, the five lingering questions. The thing is, multiple questions are tied together. And so, I think if we're talking about the first bullet item, that's going to be a catalyst to another conversation. And you can look at how to best optimize campus facilities. So, I think they're tied together, but it, it kind of starts paving a path forward that even the committee can, can continue to have those conversations and evaluate it. We have the matrix now that we can utilize as a committee to possibly get us farther down the road, which it sounds like you may want to try to get some traction and, and try to find what options are, are there. So, I think they're tied together, but it's a starting point.
I'd like to ask about the space considerations for New Hope and Leo because I also am opposed to combining them. In my visits to New Hope, they're trying to do, you know, one type of, of programming and educational environment. I've been to Leo and they're trying to expand and do all these incredible things to improve their educational environment. And then to take off of the list of space considerations for administration, that was not an exaggeration when you said, Dr. Grissom, that people are sitting on top of each other. I saw a space recently and there's literally staff members like popping up from behind computers and boxes and equipment and I'm in there going, what is happening in this room? And why are there like fifty-two of you in here? But I would love to know if the committee thought about, and you, you sort of started going into it, combining these schools with more space for administration? Because like Dr. Garing referenced, we're already doing it for Leo. We've got the conference space in with Leo. But my other concern with the space is something that Dr. Courier mentioned because you also have legislative legal differences in the environments for these campuses. And trying, I have a facilities concern there because trying to combine two vastly different programs with different actual facility requirements in a legal lane, that's a whole different ballgame. So, I'm wondering if the committee was open to talking about combining these facilities with administration? So, that way, we're allowing admin more room and the campuses both, oops, sorry, have, um, have room to expand their programs so that we can get all those students in the waitlist in at one time or Leo can have room to change up what they're doing as they're changing their programming?
So, that's a, a great question. Um, and I would say, the committee, I don't know that we gave them enough information, to be totally honest, to really understand when we say that we need offices, what that means. And so, our very first meeting, which is next week, we're actually hosting it at Leo and we're going to actually take a tour and go see the office spaces and give an understanding of what all, um, our office, central office looks like. And then also going over to New Hope and letting them see New Hope as well. Because as we were going through conversations and, and they were looking at the matrix and, and digging into that, we, we did not do a really good job of giving them, this is really that comprehensive look of the office spaces to support our staff that are needed. So, I think that's a great question and one thing that we're definitely working on to make sure we give them that information as we go into this year.
I'm gonna try to move us through these items, um, unless somebody, I think we're trying to hit on items and like Jeremy said, so many of our discussions on one of these is gonna impact another one of these, right? And, and I, I think it'll be iterative and I just talked to Bruce and he's like, if y'all don't want to be here until 2:00 AM, we should probably- we should probably, we should probably start trying to think of these others. I think, I also want to make sure though, that, that we're able to kind of demonstrate some will of the board in some of these items. And, um, and for that first one, I think it was kind of clear of where the will of the board was on, on that item. But I think we're going to come back and have more discussions around some of these. So if we can move to comprehensive secondary schools or innovative academies, kind of if you could give us more information on where the committee ended with that, kind of what, what was the lingering items? Uh, you know, what was that surrounded by?
My only concern is through this process, as a board, we're taking like a lot of the work and we're not getting the work. And we're just, I just want to know, are we going to do, are we trying to make decisions on all of it right here? Is, is that the point? Because if, if we are, I mean, some of this I feel like admin could work on and come back with information and then we can have discussions on it. Like when I'm looking at it, I think open enrollment, committee made a recommendation for it. We've talked about it here. Admin, go work on open enrollment. I don't think that needs more committee discussion. I don't know if it needs more school board discussion. I think I need admin to go work on it and give us something so we can vote on it.
I think, I think that's kind of where we're going with all of these. I think, I feel that same way about the first one. I feel like committee worked on it, admin spoke on it, and I think there's a will of the board on it. And so now admin, go work on it. And so I think on a lot of these, I think we, we can get to that place with open enrollment. I, I completely agree. I think, but I don't know if every, I don't know if that's the will of the board. So I shouldn't say that. We haven't gotten to that point, right? But I, I agree with what you said, Trish, with that, that piece. And I think that yes, we can do those for a lot of them of, okay, here we are, here's the information. What's, where's the will of the board? Admin, what's the next step to go work on that? And for combining Leo and New Hope or not, I think we have some, we have some information. We heard from the committee, the subcommittee made a recommendation to the whole committee. The whole committee was then divided and we heard information, more information about New Hope. We have a sense of where the will of the board is. So, okay, admin, go work on that and kind of give us more information. But I don't know if we can give you enough information unless we talk about innovative academies and, and comprehensive secondary schools, optimization, all those pieces.
Here's what I'm doing. I'm trying to figure this out. So help me process this for a bit. So the facility subcommittee, we're just going to, some of this is stuff that the facility subcommittee worked on, say that five times real fast. And so how to best optimize campus facilities? The facility subcommittee came up with recommending, but we don't have that. That's not in front of us. So are we going to, in theory, just talk about their highlights? Are we going to get the information to us of that work? Like how are we going to get the work that was done? Does that make sense? Because we're not getting the work that's done right now. We're just getting the bullet point. Does that, Sarah, do you understand what I'm asking there?
Yeah, I, I think so. Um, I, I think what this does is really helps us to understand what, what we're going to address with the committee on the 24th and how we're going to proceed with the work. Because our job eventually, remember, is for us to bring, as administration, to bring back a recommendation to the board. That's well informed by the long range planning committee, um, because that has community members on it. But, but our job is to bring you a recommendation. Your job is to then make decisions about how we go forward. And so this, this helps to give us direction about how to work with the committee and what to ask for and what, what we're seeking. So that we can more efficiently bring back a, a recommendation to the board.
I'm wondering if Gloria, if in the interest of moving everyone along, the three in the middle are going to depend on the open enrollment piece. Because if we want to do open enrollment or if we want admin to look into open enrollment, the rest of that isn't even going to happen until after that. So.
Absolutely. See, let's jump to number, let's go to number five. I think we've talked about open enrollment as a board, you know, um, the committee talked about open enrollment, you know, um, I think that we've been looking and I know individually, when I talked to Bruce, you know, we're like, let's do this, let's do this. And, you know, I think I told you five years ago, I was highly opposed to open enrollment when other school districts did this. And I got a, I got a postcard at home from Round Rock and I was like, how dare you, Round Rock? And, and now I'm like, all right, let's do this, you know? But I think that's an area, when we talk about open enrollment, I also have 15 million questions around that, right? And what the policy is and which schools and how do you decide and what percentage? And so as I think about our long range planning and you're saying, okay, this helps inform the meeting next week. I'm thinking about subcommittees and I would, I'd love for a subcommittee to dig deep into open enrollment. What does that look like? Right? What is the policy around that? What are all the pieces around that? But that's me. I, I'm curious what, how everyone else feels about open enrollment. I have a lot of questions around it, but I'm very interested to learn more. I'm open to the idea. But I think we all have questions around that policy.
So, uh, the way I see the open enrollment also sounds like repurposing. It, you're basically repurposing some seats in that school for, okay, I, maybe it's a bad word. But I, it, it, it has that same thought in my head.
No, it's not. Gotta want people to hear that if we're doing open enrollment, we're repurposing that building.
No, no, no. So, but basically where I was going with this is if there are specific schools that are going to be open for open enrollment, outside, outside district open enrollment, then would there be discussions with those communities to let them know? Or, or what kind of engagement or input? Well, because they can, what if they say no? Like, don't touch.
I think, I think it's not so much specific campuses. I mean, I think it's, it's, we're open enrollment as a district, but specifically, right, to campuses that fall below this piece. And then I think that's where communication goes back to site based planning committees. Cause it has to be local at that campus, right? Let site based own that. I think as a district, if we decide, if the board decides we're going to do open enrollment when a school falls below this rate, whatever percentage, and that's, those are all the questions, right? That our committee could go and look at. But I think at that point, it needs to, all that communication and, and all the specific, you know, discussions around that have to go to site based, right? So that's happening very, very locally with that community, with the leaders that are working with that site based planning committee that are also tying that to their student learning on that campus. That it's, it's just all connected.
I, I agree with that. I got to attend a site based committee last night as a parent. And I was just truly like, I texted Gloria and I was like, oh my gosh, I got to see this in action. Because parents had a seat at the table in regards to what does the future at this high school look like? What are your hopes and dreams for the next three years? And to be able to, you break it down because, you know, those that know, they're like, oh, PLC, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Parents want to know what does that impact in the classroom look like for their kid, but most importantly, that community. And that right there, your site based committee for parents at home that don't know. You want your voice heard? Join your site based committee. That is what is going to impact your students and you and your community the most. And you can have a seat at the table. As far as open enrollment, um, I remember this meeting when it came up because I heard a cap in regards to special education. I would love the committee to look into that. Because if we're going to do true and open enrollment, it needs to be open to all students. But at the same time, we have to ensure that we are not overburdening our staff. We know our special education numbers are rising daily. We also know that we are struggling finding teachers in this department. So I want to make sure that we're giving each and every student what they need. But I don't want to, I do not want it to affect our students we have now. And most importantly, our staff get the support they need. That's, I could go on about that. But I would love the committee to really look into that. And I know that they looked at different, uh, school districts around the, um, state of Texas as far as what does that weight look like, you know, who gets to come in? Because we got to remember, we also have our strategic plan in regards to access and removing barriers. And we have our local AEA, local policy in regards to not discriminating anybody. So I just, I want to see the committee take off and run with that. And I do want to mention this, that this isn't subjected to one part of the district. If you look at our numbers, it is north, central and south that that open enrollment could happen because we have elementaries with our staggering, um, enrollment. I just want to make that clear because there are north schools that, that could benefit from this open enrollment.
I really love the idea of open enrollment. I will second all of that. And just to piggyback off of Anna's comments, I would like the committee to be involved with our Office of Educational Access. Because not just with special education, but if we're only going to have open enrollment available to, to the campuses that are under a certain threshold, I want to make sure that we're not creating a gap or a barrier to every other program as well.
I just want to clarify because Trish, I, I want the long range planning committee to discuss open enrollment. I kept saying the committee, like everyone knows, sorry. Just wanted to clarify.
When I look at these, I keep coming back to this one in the middle that like, ugh, sticks out the worst to me. It's timing of elementary builds 31 and 32. We, um, we talk about, you know, open enrollment, we're talking about really innovative academies and, and what that looks like. And, and I think, um, innovative academies are important, not just as, as New Hope, but we know students learn differently. We know that charter schools are growing in our district. And I think this is a real opportunity to create innovative learning schools, to, to bring back folks that are looking for different types of experiences, right? That are looking for STEM schools, that are looking for K through eight schools, you know, just different types. And so I'd love for, you know, maybe that's an area that we really dig into also with our site, with our long range planning committee. But when I look at timing of elementary builds 31 and 32, it says 33 too, but 31 and 32 was, that was on our last bond. We passed that bond. We made a social contract with our community when we talked about that bond. And we also, we talk a lot about community neighborhood schools. That that's, that's the piece that makes Leander so special, right? That we are this big growing district, but we have neighborhood schools that, that we, that we love and that our students go to. And so, um, I, I know that we passed these bonds and we told our, you know, we, we told voters that it was for elementary school 31 and elementary school 32. And we know, like in one of these areas, you know that neighborhood better than I do, go ahead.
Where 31 is located, I mean, we want to go, sorry, okay, we're going to get, I'm not, we'll take that back. I want to go back to with the long range planning committee. When they came out with a recommendation of school sizes, which was 800, right? That is the, what we feel like that that is the best for our students when it comes, you know, the experience and the outcome. When we look at schools in the northwest of Austin, our district, not Austin, we have schools over 800. I mean, I could, 869, 875, we're seeing that explosion. And I mean, I can say this for a fact, I have 29 kids in my kid's fifth grade class. It's not okay. Cause when we're talking about students' experience and outcomes, it's, anyway. We know that there's a need for that. And we thought that the early childhood center would provide relief, which it does provide relief for Larkspur North Plain. But it doesn't give any relief to Tarvin, to Aiken, to Parkside. We're seeing Pleasant Hills numbers go up. And we're seeing these classes being impacted. We have campuses with two, two, three APs because of the caseload of students. We've got to do something. It is not okay to leave these campus administrators and these parents in this community to be basically jam packed into an elementary when we have the land and this actual building already approved by the last bond. That community went out and voted for that bond. We've got to do what's best for our students and we need to get that corner elementary in the north part of our district built. We've got to. What that looks like, that's, that could be anything. I know I have, and I'm going to get on my soapbox. Y'all know, I've been talking about our early childhood hubs when we decided to move them in 2021. I said it on the dais, why are we picking these campuses in the north that we know, we see the population exploding up there? ECC helped, but it's not helping everything. So I mean, what is 31, sorry, that section of the corner of the district look like? It could be a K through eight. It could be what some of our schools are, ECCs slash K through five. But I'm going to be honest with you, this, that side of the community, we love our high schools and we love our middle schools. So it's got to be something that's going to be truly creative out of the box. Because on top of that, we also have a charter school that's coming right down the road. And we know individuals who are moving in that part of the district are coming from out of state where charter schools are the norm. That they're looking for that specialized instruction and that certain choice. So we've got to make sure that we're ahead of the curve and we give that community what they need. And that means if we look at the timeline on here, elementary 31 should be opening up next year. So that's it.
Yep.
The bond passed in May of 2023. And just because it passed and we have all this money, in my opinion, doesn't mean that we should spend it. I get what you're saying, that the community voted for it. And it did pass. But my opinion is we do need to be incredibly fiscal responsible. We have a lot of schools. Uh, Dr. Gearing and I visited almost all of them last year. And it seemed to me about, I forget the exact number. I wish, that's one part of your presentation I, I wish was in it. How many schools and the numbers where we're at exactly right now, because we could.
It's in the board book every Friday.
Yeah, we get updated every week.
I'm just saying in the presentation, it'd be easier to quote from it so that people looking at home could also have seen it. Because just because we have the money, doesn't mean we should spend it. We should spend it very wisely because it is the community's money and not everyone did vote. People did vote and it did pass. But we do have a number of schools that are just not full. And if you would have told me before I would have ran, uh, as a board member, that I could have gone 15 minutes from my house, there are at least two elementary schools where I could have taken my kids and, and not have it as a big of deal. They were, they're currently being used for other things partly because they're not full. So if that was part of the, I don't want to say the open enrollment or the idea of that. I know that you, you can ask and request for other schools, so it's not part of open enrollment.
That's not open enrollment.
Right. I, I realize that. But just because we have the money, doesn't mean we should spend it. It's not my point.
Absolutely. I agree. Um, we have other money from other bonds that we've either been able to save or we, we didn't need that thing anymore. In this case, we do see these areas growing and, um, and people did ask for these items. So I do think that it's an opportunity for us to look at open enrollment for those areas that, um, that we don't see, you know, that we see our student population decreasing. That's, open enrollment means students from out of district. And open transfer is students from your own district transferring to different schools. And yeah, if, I don't know if that, if knowing that there was a school near you, 15 minutes closer to you would have changed. And maybe then all your kids wouldn't go to private school. But right now, we, we do have a lot of schools in our district that are busting at the seams. And, and we, we need to do something for those communities. I also think we have a really unique opportunity to think about innovative academies and do something creative, right? And, um, and that's exciting. So I, you know, Trish, you said that the sub, you know, that the long range looked at that. I'd really like to hear more about that and maybe, you know, as we talk about our, um, our different sub. And maybe, you know, as we talk about our, our different subcommittees and as they come back, kind of what's, what's the charter for them now? Really thinking, thinking about it all, right? Like, I think about Treviso, we know Treviso is growing, it's continuing to grow. There's also a lot of charter schools around there. And what could we do to bring back some of our students? And is that, is that a footprint where we can do a K through eight academy, right? But I don't know, I think those are some of the things that I would love for a long-range plan to really dig deep into.
And one, one last comment about the timing. And so it's not just about spending the money, but the timing of having to spend the money. We did experience a neighbor, a neighboring school district that had to go to bond two times to build their high school because it doubled in the time that it wasn't built. So we know how much it was costing to build elementary schools. And if you wait, you're going to have to go to bond again. And we can, it's not that the growth is coming, it's already there. There, it's not just in a board book, but anytime we do the zoning, all the enrollment information is out there to show what percentage utilization we have and to show the schools in the certain quadrant of the district are bursting at the seams. We did a comprehensive zoning exercise right after the bond failed and the community said no. Their kids are not, their elementary school students are not going to wake up at 5:30 to go sit on a bus for an hour because they're being bussed to an empty or a lower utilization school. So there's the practical side of things as well.
Yeah, I was just going to comment what Shawde said. I remember that 2021 rezoning exercise that came out. Because, I mean, fifty-two comments, but most importantly, you had children that were going to travel to twenty-five, forty-five minutes away. Now, for some parents, that's feasible, but not everyone has that privilege to be able to say, hey, I'm going to take off work for an hour and a half to drive my kid down the road. But most importantly, when we do that, we take away the notion of these neighborhood schools. And Leander ISD, we love our neighborhood schools. We heard it in the rezones that we have. But most importantly, that's what builds our communities, we know this. So I mean, I just, I have to push back on this notion that, hey, you know what? Kids, sorry, we have this over here, we're just going to go ahead and ignore your quality of life and, you know, the neighborhood con, neighborhood school concept and be system-wide and not think about what's truly best for each and every student. And that's what thirty-one, sorry, I'm just going to keep, sorry. The two potential school, three schools that we're considering as far as timing, I would like to see, and I'm excited to see, the demographic reports that come out. Like we mentioned earlier, the board does get weekly updates in regards to enrollment. As far as what people want to say, we, we're not that, well, six hundred kids that, that we've got to make up. Our projections are pretty solid. But what we are seeing right now is that growth in those two areas. And when we're talking about each and every student and providing safe and equitable environments, that is what we mean. That means getting those resources in the space for these students to learn. So I would love, 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 love the long-range planning committee to really dig into, I said the right committee, dig into what those two schools look like. Is it a comprehensive elementary school? Is it this K through eight? Some of the other conversations we talked about in this innovative academies is expanding our IB program. That's one of the, I'm an IB parent, I love that program. I don't think it gets enough love in this district as it should. We don't have a middle school year. That conversation, I know, was brought up continuously in the School of Choice Innovative Academy conversations. So I'd love to see that committee really dig into the work because it wasn't only parents asking for this, we had students at the table that were like, had I known this program existed, I would have gone this route. So I, I wanted to ask the committee to really dig into what these schools look like and if we really can, I don't want to say change the game, but really meet students and parents where they're at now in this district.
One last comment, I promise. So regarding the innovative academies, there was work that was done the 2018, 2019 school year. So just making sure that that, there was a committee that worked on it for that school year. They visited schools in and around the area. And so I think it's really important that the current committee leverages that work and not start from scratch, but they, there's some, some continuity in there.
I agree with that because that's something this board has been asking for since we've got on the board is continuing that work, so.
I just wanted to also add with the new, from a facilities perspective, to make sure that the committee had the information, that the size of the schools was also discussed at a leadership meeting that I was at. And staff overwhelmingly said absolutely not to a thousand-person elementary schools. It was, I don't remember hearing anyone in that meeting say, yes, we want that. It was like this visceral anxiety, like, nope. Because it cuts down on the community involvement, it cuts down on the personalization that staff can have with the students. So I just want to make sure that when long-range starts talking about this, that they have that information and the input from our staff, that it was an overwhelming no on that one.
Okay, so adding it up in my head, it looks like we've probably given long-range planning about a year to two years' worth of work here. So I do want to know kind of what the board is thinking or estimating. You know, are we expecting it to be like, what, how we're expecting this like timelines? I think we should be.
Yeah, I think, I really, you know, Shawde mentioned something today and, and it all came back to you texting me pictures of site base last night. And, but I think that we created long-range plan committee to, to do this thing, right? And they did a lot of the things last year. And I think that there's some lingering things that, as a board, we know where we feel on those. And I think we're ready to, to move on those. I also think that there's some areas that we need more information. I think that it's long-range planning for, I don't know. I think, you know, Sarah, I, I could tell, I think you're always good at pulling these kind of things, our conversations together, but we talked about innovative academies. We talked about what open enrollment looks like, right? We talked about, we talked about what, what those innovative academies look like, right? What these buildings look like. But I think some of these, I think these committees, they go and they can do this for six months. I'd love it, like, Janu, December, and then it goes to site-based. I feel like we just have to bring this back to site-based. I also, timing of thirty-one and thirty-two, that bond was passed for thirty-one and thirty-two. I think that, I don't know, I'd love for us to have a discussion. I'm ready for our long-range planning to start talking about what those buildings look like, right? When we talk about innovative learning spaces, but then let's go, let's go. We're behind schedule. We have schools over here that are over a hundred percent capacity, right? But I don't think that it's three years. I think that we bring it to these subcommittees where we talk about our open enrollment. We talk about innovative academies. We talk about what the, what the footprint or the innovative academy or what the facility looks like for thirty-one and thirty-two, and then we go. And we have to go by bringing it back also to our site-based planning committees. I think that's the community that's specifically in, in that space, right? That, that on some of these items, it's going to have to go back to the campus. But I think some of these overarching big ones, like open enrollment, they can go and do some of that work, bring it back to us. It goes to policy committee, right? Because open enrollment is going to be a lot of policy stuff. And we have those discussions, but I also think some of these things, we've got to go. We've got to move.
Can I ask too, as we get ready to go and move, that we, we figure out how, like, let's, let's let the committee know, if there's a definite direction we have, then let's not have them spin their wheels on that anymore. And I do think, you know, my, my, my heart hurts a little bit for the, for the optimization subcommittee because there was a bunch of work. And so I'd love to just get their work to the board so that they can see all the work that went into that, right? And again, we, we can go. But, but that facilities subcommittee, they worked on the southern part of the district, had a recommendation there, they have a recommendation on optimization of facilities, they had a matrix come out. So those are other pieces that we don't see, like, I'm not really sure where that goes. So I'll just rely on y'all to help connect all these dots of what, what's the bow on it? And then what comes here so we can, we can go.
Yeah, I don't think we need to get rid of the work y'all did in that committee because y'all did some powerful work there and had some really, you were there.
It was not me, I just.
I know, but the committee did some great work and had some really hard conversations. I think that that's where you bring their work to those site-based committees. And that's where you really have, like, hey, this is what long-range planning, you know, this is the matrix, this is what they see. But at the end of the day, I mean, when we talk about the best optimization of campus facilities, it does need to go back to the site-based committee because that is your true community. That is your connection to your community. That's where your students, your staff, and your parents have a seat at the table and are able to really, you know, how is this going to impact my students' learning? How is this going to impact our community as a whole? So I don't think, we, we definitely do not need to scrape the work. We, it needs to continue and what that looks like, and that's where, we have you guys. How do you translate that to the site-based committee? But most importantly, translate it to each and every community. Because we know what's happening over here is not necessarily what's happening here. So it's going to look different at each campus, but that is the beauty of this district. So I, I don't, I don't want to get rid of it, Trish.
I think, I think that, that, that information and all of that research is going to also be really instrumental in this next cohort of long-range planning, right? I mean, I think they need those pieces, but I also think we do this and if you can bring something back in December, so then we can move it to site-based. But I do agree with Trish. If we know that there's a will of the board on some of these things, I don't want people spinning their wheels, you know, trying to make these decisions. I think that, and, and that's where it gets a little more challenging, right? But will of the board, I think the easier one was, we, we saw that one in terms of Leo and New Hope. When we talk about timing of elementary build thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, I don't know if you really heard will of the board. I could tell you, I'm ready to go on thirty-one and thirty-two. Like, as soon as we've talked to our long-range planning and figure out what that footprint is going to look like, right? What are we going to build there? Is it going to be a traditional school? Is it going to be an innovative academy? I know that long-range planning talked about like K through eight academies, which might be able to help with the middle school, not having to build a middle school, you know, and being able to save money in those ways. And so I'm really interested in having those types of discussions. But we passed the bond for thirty-one, thirty-two. The community supported those heavily because they're ready for us to go on those. So I think we need to move on those things. But I don't think it's a three-year. I really see, it's, it's a lot of the information that long-range did last year, bringing that to this group and then creating something that's really, really focused and centered around just these boxes here. Because some of those other things have already been determined.
I, so if we go to slide five, we see that timeline. Twenty-five, twenty-six, elementary thirty-one open. Twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight, elementary thirty-two open. Technically, we're behind on our timeline. We need to get going. We know the need is there. Our community has spoke, we need it. I, I want to see us start like tomorrow, I know that's not possible. Jeremy, good luck. Jeremy, I have faith in you.
You're new, go get it. Well, oh, go ahead, finish off.
No, that's, I want to see those happen now. Y'all know how I feel about thirty-three, I've said it already on the dais before, I'll say it again. I don't think we're going to need it. I'm not a professional when it comes to this.
Wait till pasta comes.
Pasta, yeah, but we don't have land for this. It was not in a bond. And I know that that's what the demographers reports have said, but each year, the demographer changes. But I know right now, in this moment, we need thirty-one and thirty-two now, we do.
Sarah, we talked a lot and we kind of went back and forth. And these lingering things are messy, right? They all have like, they all have lingering, they linger into one another, right? Um, can, can you tell me where you feel we are moving forward? Because I think, just so we can hear that from you and we know, okay, we feel good and we're aligned to move forward. I hate to put you on the spot like that, but is that okay?
That's perfect, so you can, y'all can check me if I'm right.
Can I ask about though, the thirty-one, thirty-two? Just, just the little thing about it is, just because I was under the impression, and maybe I misheard this in the committee, Anna was there. So I thought because of enrollment, there was a question of, as you build these, does it require then optimizing other campuses? So I don't want, I want to be thoughtful as we move forward. So absolutely, thirty-one, thirty-two, community supported it. If it's an innovative elementary or middle years, like K through eight, is that okay? If that's, or is it, no, it has to be elementary thirty-one and thirty-two? And is there any parameters around that? So that if we, we, we have to close another elementary because we don't have enrollment? Or re-optimize?
We're not closing any, not closing.
What, what do y'all, how do y'all feel about?
So we're talking about open enrollment in our low-enrolled campuses, for one. So I think, I also don't want to talk about closing campuses because we've decided that we're, we're staying away from those words. Our community schools are what's critical to keeping Leander ISD the district that we all know and love. And so we're, we're not talking about that. We're talking right now about, yes, there might be in the future, right? Where with the community, we decide that we're going to repurpose or whatever we, we want to call it. But I think right now, the discussion is optimizing buildings and open enrollment for those campuses. And I think, yeah, when we talk about thirty-one, thirty-two, is it an elementary or is it a K through eight type of? I think, I mean, we're open, I'm open to hearing things like that. That's still an elementary school. It's got the elementary component in there. And we have on that long-range plan, we do talk about a middle school. If we dedicate through eight, I'd love to know what, what does that do for middle school? Does that, do we still need the middle school? Are we able to then save money that way? So I think those are part, does that answer your question?
And, and you're right, we are talking about like, what are the innovative thoughts for our community? We are talking about if things need to change, we're going to optimize that, we're going to, we're going to change it up.
We're going to optimize, I just don't want to say close.
You're right, no, but that's not it though, right? You are right, we are talking about how do we make this innovative, inspiring? You know, we want to have energy in our community. My question was really kind of like the parameters as you send this back for thirty-one, thirty-two.
Right, I think the parameters are, we know that thirty-one and thirty-two has to have a K through five, right? Whether it's a traditional K through five or an innovative academy that's, you know, an IB or a STEM, or it's a K through eight. I think all of those are on the table for discussion. And now I really want to hear what, Sarah, where, because I want to make sure that, I want to hear it from you and then I want all of us to be like, okay, are we okay with Sarah going and doing that?
Okay, all right, so I'm going to try. So y'all can check me if I've, I've got this right. So one is that we need a subcommittee that is going to go out and really dig into this open enrollment. And I'm going to be upfront with you, if we are going to do open enrollment, we need to have all of that in place by January. Because otherwise, we're waiting a whole nother year before we could do anything with it. So that will be work that's going to have to move pretty fast. So then what I also heard was a subcommittee really looking at thirty-one and thirty-two. And I heard is, the will of the board is that we do honor what was, what was said through the bond communication and that we are going, what's up to be determined is what are we actually doing at those particular sites? So having a subcommittee really understanding those communities, really looking at what are some options and coming forward with some recommendations. Again, what I heard was, you want that to move quickly. So we're not looking to spend two years trying to figure this out. What I also heard was actually a deeper dive into innovative academies as we think about comprehensive secondary schools. So thinking down the road even about high school, what could that look like? And so, so I envision another subcommittee kind of doing more tours and, and looking at what could that look like? at what could that look like so we can come forward with a recommendation around that. So those were some of, what I did also hear was of the will of the board is not to combine Leo and New Hope if we are looking at moving into a central portion of the district, um, which I think definitely builds off of the work, um, from the subcommittee around facility optimization. We have a lot that we can build from on that with that clear direction of where, where the will is not to combine them. So we can build from there. Okay, what, what did I miss?
I made messy notes here and I wrote down open enrollment. I put innovative academies, optimization, and so that's where I was thinking and you, you nailed it. And so, thank you. You're so good, Sarah. You listen to, so thank you. I also, I'm excited, Jeremy, about, he's like, oh no.
I'm excited as well.
Right. I'm excited about you being here and, and being here at this stage of it, right? I think that it's a real opportunity for you to, uh, kind of jump in and, and really just lead in, in this, in this piece of it, right? So I, I appreciate you and your willingness to just kind of jump in. And Clay, thank you for letting me pull you onto the spot. You're like, hey, I'm doing, uh, you know, spotlight on learning and it's like, no, now I'm going to sit up here for an hour and a half. So, um, um, thank you for allowing us to do that.
I, I had two parts that I didn't hear come back and I just want to make sure is the board okay with that or what do we think about that? One was the conversations about the schools in the South. There's still discussion lingering and optimization, subcommittee did have a recommendation, can we get that forward too?
I thought we were going to do open enrollment and so that would, I mean, we can't do anything there, right? Until we put open enrollment in place or at least have those discussions.
Well, then we couldn't really have innovative academies until we do the, I don't, I, I think they've already done the work in the matrix. Can, can we?
So to what I heard come out was, um, for us at this next meeting to make sure we kind of button that up with the committee and then bring it back to the board so that you can hear all of that conversation, but then that conversation then lands here and you guys do what you need to with that information, is what I heard.
I do want to point out though, part of those conversations did not just include the South because we have Cedar Park schools and schools in the North that fit that matrix. I want to make very clear of that.
And, and that's what I'm saying, so they need to button up their whole recommendation because their recommendation was comprehensive, right? And they did put a lot of work in, so let's let them just make sure they refresh themselves. We'll get that information at this next meeting and then we'll bring that back to you directly. Um, and then I, I did hear, um, that the open enrollment work that we're going to do needs to go to policy committee as well, as quickly as possible.
I think it's going to go to policy committee, but I also think that's going to be an area that full board is really going to want to be involved as well. At least, I think I'd love for it to go to policy first to really dig.
To get cleaned up.
To get cleaned up, to do, I know policy committee, I was on that committee last two years and bless you all because, um, it's, it's a lot, a lot, a lot of long meetings. And so I'd love for it to get to them and then come to the board, you know, the full board for discussion and recommendation. And I know that's going to have to move really fast if we want to make this something that can happen for the following school year. And I think that if we're going to do this, we have to do it for the following school year if, you know, so, yeah, I know that's a crazy timeline.
I think just a recommendation for a policy committee, I'd love to see, uh, Dwayne's office there and, uh, Paige, part of that conversation as well because we know our surrounding districts, we know we excel with special education and Leander. And again, I'm going to repeat myself, I don't want to put the burden on our teachers, but I also know that parents are going to flock here because we're pretty amazing, so.
We would welcome Mr. Street and Ms. Collier to be a part of those conversations.
So I was just thinking about, um, the timing of the updates from the, um, committee. So for example, um, there was a lot of time, it looks like spent by the subcommittee doing, um, working, talking about the bullet point one. And then it went to the main committee and it was a fifty-fifty split. And we're hearing about it now and we're like in saying, we don't want that combination at all. And so would, it have been better for us to have been, provided our input at some point to the committee so they could, earlier on, before they spent all this time on it and just have an idea of what, where we were thinking with this.
I, I agree with her because we only have three board members on that committee, right? And we can't talk to anybody else, so we're pretty much in our lane and I get to, you know, complain to you two and that's it. I, I do think the board needs, we need regular updates. This is part of our strategic plan. This is something this board has worked on, you know, since twenty, we wanted that long-range facility plan and what that looks like. And so I think the board does need updates. I mean, after the committee on Tuesday, the board should have a Friday memo. What, what does that look like? What was discussed? So that way that communication is being cleared because, you know, we did appoint people, we, we do talk to them, but at the end of the day, this board's got to make some hard decisions. And I want to make sure, one, we're not wasting time of these long-range planning committee members. They have, they know what the direction of the board is, they know what the will of the board is. But most importantly, the board is be able to have the accurate information that's presented in that meeting so then we can also go out and advocate for what we need to do.
I mean, it doesn't mean that we can't think differently if they come up with a different recommendation, but at least they have an idea, um, and then they can provide information and, and we make sure that they have the right information and they can also process it and then let us know why they think that a different option is better.
We do that with CFAC, I just want to point that out. That was a great process that we had where we had committee members go and do the work and the board came and pulled it out and just kind of got that back and forth dialogue. So I agree with you, Shadi.
Yeah, I think, I think updates are really important. Um, I, I will say too though, that hindsight is twenty-twenty and sometimes it's really important to go through these processes because otherwise you can't get to this point where now you're ready to make some recommendations and do those things. Sometimes if you try to make the recommendations too early and you shortcut the process, you kind of force an outcome and sometimes that didn't work out in the long run. So I think we're at this point for good reason because of the work that's been done. And so I think it's really important to consider. Um, the only other thing I heard that I want to just double check on is this idea of timeline. Um, and so it was mentioned that, uh, we would work the long-range planning committee, say, um, probably at most until like December and then we'd be considering moving a lot of this work to site-based committees and trying to bring recommendations to the board as quickly as possible as we get these decisions. Because a lot of these decisions are going to need to be made, um, by May of twenty-twenty-five, just depending on when, when we need to go to bond next.
I think that's fair and I think we can reevaluate, you know, as you're giving us updates, if you're like, okay, this is where we're at, we're going to need, I mean, I think, yes, ideally, but we, you know, if we have to reevaluate, then we reevaluate, but.
Just to comment, as far as site-based committees, just making sure we're giving our principals the tools they need and we're not just throwing them up there to talk about long-range planning and, you know, just that's it.
We will make sure they're equipped, no worries.
Okay, that was a fun discussion. Uh, good job. Okay, um, we are a little bit behind schedule, but I'm going to go ahead and have us do legislative update because I saw our guest who's thinking like, come on now. Um, so we will do our legislative committee update, which is item seven B one.
No, thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, it's been a busy few weeks. A lot of stuff going on, a couple of things. I'm going to do my best to summarize sort of what's been happening. Um, first of all, State Board of Education, uh, you know, we talked about it a little bit last time about some of the things that we were anticipating. Um, and I believe tonight you're going to hear an update from someone about EMRA. That seems to be all on track, continuing down the road. Um, they're still anticipating a vote in November with the EMAT system, the new EMAT system to be done, which is the purchasing system to be done, um, at the beginning or at the end of twenty-twenty-four, beginning of twenty-twenty-five. So again, we'll see if that happens. The other thing that I wanted to mention, um, that I know that I at least gave the legislative committee a, a copy of is this proposed rule change for board continuing education. Um, originally this rule was supposed to really only address, um, those that had been convicted of felonies and prohibiting them from providing board training. Uh, it's since expanded beyond that, uh, to include, um, for instance, essentially redoing the entire way that anyone gets, um, registered as an authorized provider. Um, so I, I think there's a lot of, um, moving parts there. Uh, obviously it is an administrative rule, so it'll have a notice and comment period. Um, but the, the language as a lot of things was workshop for a very long time. Um, and I think we're going to see, we're going to see some possible changes there. So just something to look, look forward to. Um, Senate Education met this week and, and I'm going to apologize to begin with, I was switching back and forth, uh, from Senate Ed to, uh, Health, Youth and Safety and, uh, all the things that day. And they even were having, um, education, uh, related discussions in Health and Human Services. So it was, it was quite a day, uh, on Tuesday. So, uh, Senate Ed, just real quick highlights again, um, cell phones. This was one of the first topics that the commissioner discussed. The commissioner was up there for something like three hours or something, um, during his testimony, but one of the first things he discussed was cell phones. I anticipate us hearing a lot of different pieces of legislation on this subject. Um, the commissioner cited several studies that shows declines in achievement as smartphone usage goes up, um, throughout our time. So again, the committee was very, very interested in this. The House Committee was very, very interested in this. Uh, we've had a lot of legislators, um, doing press about this. So I anticipate lots and lots of bills, whichever one is the magic one, I don't know, but, uh, and what that looks like always, um, you know, obviously concerns from some parents about, uh, having access to cell phones before and after school. You know, what are the designated times that the cell phones might be prohibited? All those sort of unanswered questions still linger. Teacher pay. Uh, there was a long discussion in Senate Ed about teacher pay. I, I wanted to cite a few statistics that the, the agency used. So, uh, according to the agency, average pay is now at sixty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-four. And remember, this isn't just starting teacher pay, this is throughout, um, entire careers, uh, which is actually up fifteen percent over the last five years. But, uh, the agency did mention, um, over that same time period, inflation has rose twenty-four percent. So, uh, I think that's important. Uh, strange, um, comment by the commissioner that said essentially lower student ratios is, have actually negatively impacted teacher pay. I understand the logic of what, of what he's saying. Um, but again, you know, I'm, the student achievement aspect is, is, uh, perhaps a little different story there. But obviously if you have more students in the classroom, um, that's less teachers that you have to pay, I suppose. TIA is going to exceed one billion dollars annually in the next three to four years. I think it began at two hundred and sixty million. Um, so that, that program continues to expand. Sped, uh, special education. Um, so I, I thought the first graph was very interesting, um, that we now have, we've seen a seventy-two percent increase in the number of students that are now served through special education. Um, and if you look at the first year, it was eight point six percent, which is when we had the cap, right? So, um, obviously, uh, it's not that we have more special education children, we're just identifying more, right? Um, so there was also a, a long discussion about the deficit, uh, the delta between what districts get for special education and what they're ultimately paying. Um, TEA's number was around one point seven billion. Um, I've obviously heard different numbers and that includes, um, the issues surrounding SHARs, uh, that we all know too well. Um, they did refer to the Special Education Funding Commission, uh, that had a report that came out before last session. Um, and one of the things that, uh, the commissioner pointed out and one of his main highlights of that report was the service intensity-based funding system. Um, and sort of, uh, I'm not going to say he was pushing that, but obviously was something that he highlighted for the committee. Accountability, uh, obviously the lawsuits came up, um, and there was a long discussion amongst the committee and the commissioner about those lawsuits. Um, you know, again, like last time, uh, I told you, you know, literacy is back at, the third grade reading level is back at pre-COVID levels. Um, there's also this long discussion about the testing system generally and lots of questions. Um, he laid out a couple of different options outside of just the one test, um, sort of model, uh, to include sort of this ongoing interim assessment type idea. Um, and he actually laid out what some of the other states are doing. But if you really drill down, at least as far as I'm concerned, what I saw on both the options is that you still have a lot of dependence on a spring exam, uh, based on the options that they're laying out. So, um, and I think the other, you know, sort of policy piece that you have to watch, uh, because I was, um, a staffer when we passed End of Course all those years ago. Um, and I, I will never forget, um, I had a legislator tell me that we went from one hard test to seven or whatever it was at that time, right? And so you want to make sure that you're not, um, you know, by spreading out the exams, creating a more larger burden on students. So lots of things to weigh in there. And I do believe, again, I think I said this last time, I do believe we're going to have some accountability bills, um, as well as assessment-specific legislation. Health, Youth and Safety, um, I, there wasn't anything earth-shattering out of this. I'm just going to preface it with that, but what I am going to say is, um, a lot of discussions about the Sentinel dashboard that TEA has come out with, uh, and just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Um, number one, all parent information and concerns are going to have to be uploaded into Sentinel that are regarding student safety. Um, and, and I'm sure you guys have probably already gotten an update from your folks. That's essentially a dashboard, um, that they're going to continue to refine. Uh, my understanding is at some point it's going to have the behavioral threat assessment aspect to it as well. Um, so, and I think that, that's actually being, going to be piloted here soon. Um, with regard to officers on campus, uh, the numbers that were used, uh, you know, sort of, sort of differ from some of the numbers that I've heard, but, uh, they were saying eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars per, you know, officer per campus. Um, marshals, uh, would be around sixty thousand, um, which the committee, uh, to their credit, uh, discussed a lot about the lack of identified funding for that because obviously what the school safety bill did last session was it did add a per-campus amount with this requirement, but the per-campus amount was fifteen thousand. So obviously a massive delta there. Um, and so it would be interesting to see what policy goals and objectives some of these folks put forward. Um, TEA did also make a point to recognize the possible void or delta between, um, you know, funding for mental health and safety after ESER, so post-ESER. Um, and so I, I know that there was a lot of, uh, school officials as well as legislators that were pointing out the mental health aspect especially. Um, and privately I've heard a lot of legislators, um, discussing that again. And you, if you recall, after Santa Fe, we had a lot, a lot of discussion about that. We had some pretty large pieces of legislation come out of that. Um, and I, I think, you know, again, that is something that is continuing to, to evolve. It'll be interesting to see what, uh, bills come out of that. Uh, TEA did say that cybersecurity, um, and actually not TEA, but the, the School Safety Center said cybersecurity is going to be the focus, um, of assessments going forward. Um, so this sort of new round. Um, and obviously you all have been at the forefront of that issue. We've talked about student data privacy and those sorts of things and you've got a great tech department here. Um, I also wanted to highlight, uh, similar district was, was discussing some of their numbers, two point six million dollars out of pocket for, uh, campus security. Um, and that was, uh, for about thirty SROs, um, that they were, they were paying for, and that's up from, they had five in two thousand nineteen. Um, and then some of the rural small districts were just talking about their overall lack of ability to meet the mandates, period. You know, it's not, again, like we've talked about, sometimes it's not about the quality, it's about just finding someone. Um, and so I, again, I, the committee heard a lot of testimony, they heard a lot of the, the barriers, um, but obviously. but obviously, this is still at the forefront of everyone's mind, and, and I think we're gonna see some, some legislation on that. So that was very high level, but if I can answer anything, I'm happy to.
I, I'd like to point out that the Legislative Committee has, has been busy and continues to be busy. The things that I heard that stuck out with me on teacher pay was that there, it seems to be a recommendation of almost to adopt the class size ratios of that of California, which causes me concern. And then both, it looked like in HHS and Youth Health, we talked a lot about students, children, the youth, our youth population, having more aggressive behaviors and behavioral issues and substance disorders, kind of looking around this area. And there, both those committees almost seem to be having parallel conversations on the rising trend, and exactly what to do with it, because it is, it does seem like it's unique right now, based on what they're talking about. The other thing is funding. And I think as a board, community, I think it's important to know what your funding is going on in your district and share that information, because there was a lot of misinformation on funding going around. And speaking of great community involvement, our Cedar Park Chamber did their legislative day-to-day, and they were just, talk about a well-informed group, and we also got to hear not only from our lawmakers and help to kind of start to address some of this misinformation of their own funding, but we heard from the Texas Workforce Commission, and they talked about soft skills and how important that is for our students and for the workforce. So it was just really a neat partnership to be able to collaborate up there and hear what's going on in the community, to be able to work with, arms side by side with your business community and know, you know, kind of, that's the big picture, right? These kiddos, we're getting them up to get ready to go out to the workforce. But as I said, the committee's been busy, and special education was also a, a small point there. And Anna has been working hard on some of those issues, and so she wanted to also get an update, too.
Well, one, I'm so happy they're acknowledging with the cap being removed and what it's doing. It's not that we're having an influx of students, we're actually identifying students that need the help. And I just also wanna add that because of that cap, TEA had to pay a 33 million dollar fine for not providing IDEA to our students. So just more taxpayer dollar going out the window, and we could've been servicing our students. With that said, Trisha's right, I have been working with local ISDs in Region 13 and with their CFOs in regards to a reimbursement model for special education. The special education allotment, we know, is 31 years old, it's outdated. We know Leander ISD paid an additional 36 million dollars last year providing services for our students, and we know that that is the case around the state of Texas. So I'm really excited, because one, we're having movement, not only with trustees and districts, but those advocacy groups that I know, and many of y'all know, have never really had fond things to say about trustees or school districts. And what's powerful is that everyone is there for the right reason, and it is trying to make sure that we're getting these students and our staff what they need and an updated reimbursement model. Also, in regards to that, we're also, I'm real excited about this, is getting parents involved. I've been able to go up to the Capitol and bring those parents, because I know as a parent to two kids with disabilities, you are the voice they wanna hear. They don't wanna hear from me as a trustee and talk about policy and how they're just not giving us money. What they wanna know is how is that impacting your child? But as a parent, how is that impacting you? What, what are, what can I do to ensure that you have a seat at the table and that your rights are protected? Because we do have rights when it comes to our children's with disabilities. So I'm real excited, I've been working with Representative Bucy's office on this, and we are actually in the next stage of trying to find that bipartisan support. So Colby, you'll be getting brought in. But I'm real excited, because at the end of the day, that is common ground, it's not a Republican or Democrat issue. Special education impacts every single family, and if we're gonna ensure that we're giving each student what they need, we've gotta update those funding formulas. There's just, I will continue advocating for that until I see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm wondering if, because after, I've been reading on what they're talking about, and from all of the news stories, it's, well, safety is so important, so we gave you all these mandates, and the districts come back, 45% of us can't afford to do this. Either finish it or do it at all, depending on the size of the district you're talking about. They wanna talk about special education is so important, here's some more mandates for that, we're gonna change what you're doing for that. Districts are coming back, we don't have enough staff, we don't have enough funding to pay for more staff, we don't have enough funding to pay for the materials and the assistive technology that these kids need. The districts came back with the same exact answer for every single thing. We need them to release the funds so that we can pay for all of these things. Was there any acknowledgement at all during these conversations that there is one common denominator to every single problem the districts all over the state are talking about?
Some members recognize that issue, yes ma'am. And I'll also point out, TASSA and TASB have a joint report after or before every session of unfunded mandates, and they list out by statute all of those unfunded mandates, and I think it's just a very instructive document.
Oh, there's a document? Oh, I'd like to see that document, the list of unfunded mandates. I think that's pretty helpful, because it, it really helps, as we talk about getting the community involved, it really helps inform and educate them on what we've been saying all along. The funding is, I mean, to keep, you talk about 1.7 billion dollar gap in funding for special education. Were they talking about trying to close that gap in any way?
There was definitely discussions about the issues related to the gap, but I, I think everyone's still keeping their cards close to the vest.
Yeah, I mean, we know the issue, it's how are they gonna solve it? So the questions that I have, you mentioned that for similar situated districts that they were, said they were spending on average 2.6 million out of pocket for 30 SROs, was there any discussion about even the difficulty in getting SROs from local police departments?
Yeah, and in fact, this, this district in particular said that they, previously, this was all in-house police department, and now they've had to contract with the county, because they just can't simply keep up, so.
Is there any conversation or concern from TECOL itself about the number of police departments that have been spawned because of House Bill 3 and of the sustainability of those police departments over time? Are you hearing any of that?
I haven't heard any to date, but privately, yes, I've heard that from legislators, but not from TECOL specifically.
And, and I'm bringing this up, because as we go through TECOL licensing, we're feeling that from this side of the process, that it's getting more and more difficult to go down this road, because there's a lot of concern from TECOL itself about what's happening with, with police departments in general, and are those sustainable as they get spawned across the state, so.
That's interesting.
And then, oh, does anybody, sorry. You also mentioned that the TIA fund went from 250 million, and they expected to grow up to like a billion over time. Is the program expanding, is it changing? Because I've, we've heard here on the board, and then just from looking for information about it, how it, how it's implemented can be problematic. So just wondering if they're making some changes to, to ease up some of those issues.
My understanding is it is expanding, and that's why the number is expanding. I also have heard rumblings that they're going to have discussions about making some changes, but it is still, I will tell you, it's still one of the preferred methods, obviously by the agency, but also by some legislators for, you know, how districts compensate teachers. And I think, I've heard some of the concerns about implementation, and I think some districts rightfully have more concerns than others, because of the way they're situated in some, some instances. But I think, I think the bulk of the legislature, the last two sessions, has put a lot of investment into that program. And so I think there's a lot of parties that wanna see it continue. But I think also, they're starting to become this recognition of it's not, it's not perfect, right? And so I think there's gonna be some discussions about changing some of the methodology.
Do we know, or do you recall how much was appropriated last? I'm thinking a couple hundred million?
Yeah, I, I think when it started, it was 260 million, I believe.
But the growth of the program's contingent upon the appropriations, so it is gonna be capped.
Right, exactly.
Right? And so that's also kind of an interesting phenomenon, too, is you can go through all these hoops to get in there and depend, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to see, I just think there's a whole lot of interesting.
Especially when it started, that was, that was an impediment for a lot of people joining up, right? Is that, you know, okay, so on average, I think the agency said, you know, teachers are gonna, they could see an 11,000 dollar increase or something in their total pay. And there was this idea of, yeah, but it's subject to every two years of appropriations, right? So what happens if, you know, just like we can't bind future boards of trustees, we can't bind future legislators, right? So what happens if the next legislative session, they decide they don't wanna do it anymore?
And when I, when I'm seeing the TIA model right now, it is not 100% of your district, it's only for a few, it's only a, a percentage of teachers.
That's correct.
That get that. And so there's like this interesting dynamic that happens.
And you also have, I think, a lot of the concerns that I've heard from districts, especially mid-sized and rural districts, are the, you know, I guess, transfer of teachers from one district to another. And, you know, that obviously, you know, if, if you're going from District A that has this base pay versus District B down the road, you know, that's, that can have an impact.
And Colby, I'll keep listening as well, but Legislative Committee Board will be interested to hear as, there's a lot of rumblings and discussion of legislation that people are already starting to work on. And I'm curious about the one that they're putting together regarding discipline, I think there's a couple out there. And, and, and also how to, how to protect our teachers as well. And I think there could be some good things, but I think if we're, if, if there's some people operating under misunderstandings or not knowing about a school system, there could also be some, some challenging things. So if you could just keep us updated. Because we do wanna protect our teachers, I love that.
And that, and that came up, that was part of that Health and Human Services discussion, and the aggression comment and all that. And, and I, you know, being a, a school lawyer, Chapter 37 is, is, is a mess, but it's not an easy solution. Yeah, it's not an easy solution at all.
Yeah, and we need to keep saying that over and over again. I think people love the, give me the, give me the turnkey model that solves all the problems, and that one is not gonna be an easy solution.
No, not at all.
It needs to be addressed, but it's not gonna be easy. All right, thank you, Colby.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Have a good rest tonight.
We're gonna take a 10-minute break, we'll be back here at 9:25.
We'll be back here at 9:25.
We are back from break, and we are moving on to our next agenda item, which is 7A1, Discussion of Instructional Materials Review and Approval Process.
Good evening, Madam President, and Board, and Dr. Gearing. So I'm in a little bit of a competition with Pete, since he presents at almost every one of these, I'm trying to do the same thing, so I'm trying to keep my run, my street going tonight. So our purpose tonight, I gotta, is to talk to you about our instructional materials selection process. As was referenced earlier, House Bill 1605 has impacted that and made, made quite a, quite a few changes in what that might look like, and it's actually caused some confusion. So I'm going to talk through a little bit of that tonight and kind of give you an idea of what our plans are moving forward. So just as a brief reminder, this is what historically the process would look like, and I don't want to read through all of this with you, but you would, the Board would call for a proclamation, and they were on an eight-year cycle for the four core content areas. Usually those were tied to an update or an overhaul, so to speak, of the TEACs for that particular content. So then the Commissioner would appoint panels for the, for the review of the resources and the publishers. The reports of the, from those panels to the State Board were done by the Commissioner or the committees. There was a requirement for 50 to 100% coverage of the TEACs of, of any material that they were considering for State Board approval. And then publisher contracts were normally negotiated for that eight-year time period when the next proclamation would circle around. Then on the local side, the, the process and policy was established locally. Local boards had total authority to, to adopt as they saw fit, usually based on the recommendation of the administration. Just in Leander and general, community and teacher input has been an emphasis. And so here we write local curriculum to ensure TEACs coverage at 100% rate, and that's an ongoing process. So our resources are not our curriculum, they are heavily embedded in them. So from the funding side of things, this gives you a historical perspective in terms of, this used to be called TIMA, in the state's infinite wisdom, they just rearranged those letters. They all stand for the same, the same words. So this is the allotment for instructional materials and technology. And you can see, we talked about this last spring when we were adopting science materials, that we, there was a significant cut of almost $5 million in that 21, 22, 22, 23 biennium year, when that was, that funding cycle. It was restored, but that caused a lot of long-term impact to the funding we had available, and that, you guys remember, we had to approve $2 million to cover the science adoption for, that's being implemented this year. So then if you switch gears a little bit, now it's called the Instructional Materials Review and Approval Process. Now, that's the new name after House Bill 1605. Very similar, the, the State Board calls for an EMRA cycle, although we don't really have established cycles, and I'll get into that in a minute. A difference that I want to kind of talk about now, and I'll circle back to in a minute, are these quality and suitability rubrics that were established by the State Board. And with, a lot of input was sought, and, and we had members from our department that provided input on these. I don't know if they listened to all of that input or not, but there are some things in there that have potential to cause some confusion that might be important for you to be aware of. So now the State Board calls for publishers to submit materials. TEA supports that process for the Board. The materials are currently, right now, available for public review and feedback. Again, we've had members of our team who have been providing that feedback, and there's, there are some concerns around some of the materials that are being expressed widespread across the state. So that list that will admit, that will be created is going to be updated annually. So essentially, the state is kind of going through this adoption process from a statewide perspective every year for multiple content. That's what it looks like. So an important thing to note for, for the Board and the committee is that, at a local level, the Board still has the authority and the ability to adopt whatever resource they see fit, and that is recommended by, by the administration. The big, the big difference is the funding aspect of this. So you can see that, that the approved list, which has always been around from the State Board, but now it's heavily financially incentivized. That's, that's my terminology, but you'll see how that works here in just a minute if you haven't already read about it. We will continue to place emphasis on teacher and community input. Resources are a very hot topic, as you know, so we want that community input and, and support for what, whatever we determine is, is best for our students. We will continue local curriculum writing as necessary. Just in general, instructional resources are evolving, and they're evolving in a way you saw previously, it was acceptable to have 50% TEACs coverage, so that means there has to be curriculum writing. Publishers are changing their approach, and so the need for curriculum writing may not necessarily go away, but it is evolving and changing, so to speak. So for this particular EMRA cycle, these are the content areas that are being, going through EMRA Cycle 2024. Next to it, I, I have the number of publishers that are even being considered by the state. I think, as Colby mentioned earlier, we were, to get that list in November, there, I think there's some pretty pervasive skepticism about meeting that deadline, but that is still the, the timeline that we've been given. So you can see in the big one, K through 5 reading, there are only two publishers even being considered by the State Board right now. So even if both are approved, there's, there are only two options to have access to those funds. You can see in phonics, there are 14, and in phonics in particular, there are some, some decent resources in there. We don't know what will be approved. So not knowing what is even going to be on the list is causing some of the, the problems around timeline and how we determine what our next steps are going to be. Even our directors, Alicia Westcott and Amanda Hardwick, are already in communication with publishers. A lot of publishers didn't even submit. They wanted to wait and see. This is very different. And so some of the bigger names in publishing just didn't participate. They are looking at participating in the future, which is an important thing to consider that we'll talk about in just a minute as well. So back to the funding piece. So I put this in green, but that makes it look positive. It's really not positive. So this quote-unquote additional funding we're given, so it's a $40 a year student if we purchase from the State Board-approved list, which we don't have yet, and none of those, you saw the, the number of publishers available. Because the way this was rolled out, we are getting $80 per student because it is for 23, 24, and 24, 25. It is important to note that that money does roll and accumulate, just like the previous TIMA funds. The $20 a year per student, if you adopt the open ed resource, because there is so much, there are so many, so much copying and stuff that has to be done with those, they give you an additional 20. But if you don't, you don't get that, or if you don't use it all, you lose it. So if we were to adopt and adopt from the State Board-approved list in '25, '26, which is actually adoption for '26, '27, we would have $120 a student available because we'd run into that next funding cycle. So you can see, just, this is just my rough math, that, that we're getting additional 3.3 million, but remember, a couple slides ago, we lost almost 5 million. So when you look at that 120, it does, it does hit 5 million, but it's only to adopt resources that, that they are approving at the state level and for those content areas, which, now, that, we get into this part. So right now, there aren't really proclamations. Those have gone away, and there isn't really an indication of any cycle. So we don't really know what's coming when, and that makes planning of how to use these funds or the other instructional materials allotment quite difficult. So social studies is, is, has not had a proclamation since 2015. There were, you guys remember all the controversy around social studies TEACs a few years ago, and then they threw them all out. They did update, it was not a major overhaul, but there were some updates that were, have been implemented this year. We've addressed those curriculum. We haven't purchased new resources comprehensively. Now, we did last year for AP social studies, but that, that was due to the, the, the contracts expiring and the need to update those. So that's a different, whole, almost an entirely different process. So we haven't purchased for, for comprehensively K through 12 non-AP social studies courses since 10, for 10 years. So you can imagine the challenges that that presents. Remember, there's, used to be an eight-year cycle, that's how all the contracts were written, so we're kind of patching that together as best as we can right now. And I'll, I'll give you a little bit more detail about that, but these are some of the challenges. And remember, even if we had these funds available, social studies isn't even on the table for the additional funds because that's not something the State Board is adopting right now. Same thing happens for CTE. CTE is a little bit different. They used to do a full proclamation, 2017 was the last time, but if you remember, we did adopt for a couple of the course pathway, course pathways last year. They broke it up by, by, by those broad, I just lost the word, sorry, those broad instructional areas, but they put them, they put them on a broken-up cycle, for lack of better words. So we were only adopting for certain CTE courses. So these courses that are listed were due to be adopted for this year, for the following year, and you can see the number of courses in Leander that are impacted by this. Health science was one of those areas that we adopted last year, but there were a couple of courses that weren't a part of that, so the, the rest of these should, we should be adopting for them. So very similar to, to social studies, these resources are expiring, the contracts are running out, and so that's causing us some challenge, and I'll explain a little bit more what our teams are doing about that. So some things for us to think about, there are a limited number of publishers being considered. So is this the time to really access those funds, if there's even something on the list that we would want? So we could potentially purchase something from that list, and then they turn right around and add something better next year if we've used our money. And so we really need to think through and be strategic. The timing of that resource list that's approved coming out in November puts us on a delay from what we normally do. Normally, at this time, we've already have committees up, running, looking at resources. There's really no point in looking at resources right now because the only way to purchase them is with this, with this excess, or these extra dollars that we've been given. So another factor is just to, to consider the impact on our teachers. If you remember, we adopted science last year, this is very significantly different, and it's a good thing. It's great. And the teachers, we're getting a lot of positive feedback about it, they love it. But it is a two-year rollout for, at the elementary level, and so because of the way we do our science kits, it, it takes a while to get the rotations down and, and roll all those units out. So even if we adopt now, we would have, be asking teachers at the elementary level to continue the science rollout and possibly pick up another content area, which would be hard from a professional learning standpoint and just a workload for our teachers. So that's something to think about as well. So similar to that, if we were to look at, say we, say there was something on there that we liked for phonics, reading, and math, we couldn't adopt all those at once. One, some of the early kind of math, we don't know the cost, just to be clear, but kind of projecting cost, there's no way that the, the $80 per student is going to cover the cost if you want to adopt all three content areas, which we've never done that before, that I can, that I know of, in any school district where we have multiple content areas adopted at once. That would be a huge rollout. So it would be important for us to consider, what, how can we align, you know, what our belief and value system related to learning is in our specific content areas? Our science team did this, and they worked on it for two or three years, and really spent a lot of time with teachers for the, the entire year leading up to the adoption. So there was a lot of contribution from the student and the teacher and the parent and community level, and it made the rollout go so much more smoothly. And so to just turn on a dime quickly in November, we're feeling like that would be a huge undertaking without time. a huge undertaking without time to get um, the buy-in from our teachers and support. The other thing to think about is how this impacts, I talked about the teachers, but when we adopt something significantly different, it also impacts our students. Even if it's good, it is still um, an impact on them as well. So here's what, here's how we're adopt, addressing the, the challenges with, with social studies and CTE. We are looking at um, contract extensions. A lot of the publishers know that we're all going through this, so they're working with this, but it is un, it's unplanned costs that we didn't know would be coming. You know, we thought we were going to be able to adopt social studies and so we weren't planning in our local funds to budget for these things. That doesn't mean we're in dire straits. We have a supportive district, we do have a decent budget. So we're, we're working through those things, but it is something, it is, it is challenging. Uh, one of the companies that we use, um, just went out of business. So we can't even try to negotiate an extension on that contract because they're no longer in business. And then we are looking at other supplemental resources that we can add to our curriculum right now as well. And so we, we, those aren't full adoptions as a primary resource, but we do use a rubric and a process that we have developed based on board policy. It's very similar to what we do when we adopt. You know, there's that first part, if it doesn't meet specific criteria, we don't even move it forward in the process. So we look at those things and make determinations if this is appropriate for, for our system. And we have been doing that for all supplemental resources. So what we would like to do is, uh, you, I, I think you had the one-pagers for our core content areas in the, the board letter that went with this presentation. Those are really driving a lot of work in our district right now and I'm, I anticipate that we'll keep refining those and improving them. But I think it would be worth our while to, to get input from teachers, principals, students, community members. Not so much in the, very similar in the way we do when we're adopting a resource, but let's talk about what we believe is quality math instruction and reading, language arts, phonics instruction. People have very strong opinions about phonics and instruction. It's probably the topic I'm emailed the most about from parents in terms of curriculum. And so I think building that common understanding and common vision would help, help inform us and, and kind of go slow to go fast and maybe look at adopting something down the road, depending on what lands on that state board list. Excuse me. We did, as a part of this process, go through, and it was pretty painful, to be real honest. We compiled a, a list of all primary resources and you have access to that. We are working with SCR to get it on our website. If it's not already there, it will be soon. Just to be transparent with our community, because I think this change, you know, if you look at the, the House Bill 1605 page on TEA's website, I don't know if you've looked at it, it gives parents a how-to and a place to file a complaint about a district that's not in compliance with the guidelines. Which is okay, but it is challenging because the, the, the rubrics were developed after we've all adopted all these resources. They haven't given us enough money and time to adopt everything. So if a parent goes on there and doesn't know the historical perspective of all this, it looks like we are not in compliance with those rubrics. Sorry. A good example of that is one of the, the items in the rubric is that it says that publishers, they will not approve a resource that is aligned with common core. Because the state of Texas is not a common core state, we have the TEES. Every publisher aligns their resources to common core because most of the states are common core, but they also align them to the TEES. That's very confusing to parents, I understand that. But art, the way they've articulated and made it a part of the requirements and the rubrics has created problems with publishers, which is why probably a lot of them are not submitting this time around. But it does create confusion to, for our community and, and they may start asking, why are we not? And why are we not following the guidelines from the state and, uh, in terms of what the resources that we're using? So also we've updated that instructional materials manual. As you remember, earlier this year, you guys adopted EFA and EFB local as a new policy. So we realigned the manual with that and it, it helps with even some of the things we're implementing in relation to book reconsiderations and stuff. So it's a pretty comprehensive document. It's really designed for internal users, but we put it on our website. Or if it's, it's not there, it will be soon. We want to be transparent with our community of how we're operating and looking at materials. So just some of those key takeaways, I've already said this. Again, those rubrics were all developed after our current resources were adopted. So if you hear from parents and community members, that kind of gives you some information. Or if any community, community members are watching tonight, uh, that builds that awareness. That comprehensive list, we want to be transparent with everybody. And then just always reminding people that our resources are not our curriculum. Some districts do operate that way, we do not, uh, at this time. And then just another seems like fairly hot topic is an instructional strategy called three queuing. If you listen to the podcast Sold a Story, this was a big centerpiece of that podcast. And so it found its way into a lot of legislative, legislation. 1605 includes a pro, it's prohibited under 1605. So there's a, there are publishers that we use, Fountas and Pennell, that are associated with this strategy. But because it is prohibited, we, we, we do use Fountas and Pennell publish, uh, their resources. But three queuing is a strategy and we've communicated to all of our principals. We've recommunicated and asked them to talk with teachers. We've made it pretty clear. I don't know that it's even being used in our district anywhere, but I do get fairly frequent emails, uh, asking about this particular strategy. Should, I thought I would add that in there since it's a big part of House Bill 1605. All right. I believe that is it, unless you have questions.
I have more of a comment on slide 13 in regards to the next steps. And the, you know, getting that feedback from our community members and our stakeholders. I really would like to see how this could play out at our site-based committees. And the reason why I say this, because I went to one last night.
Yeah.
But what I loved is, so parents are asking, they're like, well, what does deepen, deeper learning mean? Or they didn't really understand the full concept of what we're trying to do in Leander ISD. And I feel like that that was the perfect opportunity where you had district administrators and you also had campus leaders there to be able to break it down. Well, hey, this is what we're talking about, like give them that next step. And so parents actually had a chance to be, to dig into what that, what that learning looks like at each campus. And I feel like we have an opportunity to really utilize those site-based committees and get the feedback that we're wanting. I mean, we, we know that we can host, you know, a meeting here at central office, a meeting, you know, in Cedar Park. But everybody's busy and they're looking at the grand scheme of things. When you take it down to that local level, that's impacting your community, that's impacting your child. You see those day-to-day operations on that campus. And so I would like to see us try to figure out, how can we incorporate that into our site-based committee? So parents do have that opportunity, but most importantly, students are there as well. Students get to have that conversation and parents get to hear what learning is like in the classroom. Because learning 10 years ago in the classroom does not look like what it looks like today. So I would love, I'm going to be talking about site-based committees a lot after last night, but I would really like to see how can we incorporate that into there? Because we, the model is set up in our system, it's just how can we utilize it better?
Yeah, I, that's a good idea. I'll, I'll go and explore some options of how we could possibly do that. Because I, I like the idea that, that their principal from their school and their teachers are there. There's a different trust. You know, we got good feedback last year through CAC, but parents don't know and have a relationship with me in the way they do with principals and teachers that are in those. So I think there's a lot more possibility there. It's just figuring out how we could possibly structure it, yeah.
I'm curious about slide number seven. I want to go back there for just a bit as we're looking at like what's getting approved or the funding. So there's this statement about $20 a year for the printing ones. So this is if we adopt OER.
Yes.
And there's a lot of discussion right now on OER. I know we've heard the discussions on Amplify Curriculum, actually what is TEA doing now? I mean, there's a lot, there's, there's a lot. Are you putting this number up because you think open and ro, OER is where we're going to go? Are you just saying these are all the options?
No, I'm not saying that's where I think we will go. I think we will go where we get our community and teacher feedback. I'm putting this number up because I want the community to understand that the, the funding challenge that we face and how they've structured these additional funds. Because people hear, oh, well, they gave you 3.3 million dollars extra. We do get our regular allotment as well, but we have all these challenges and that money is, comes with strings attached. So it's not really accessible to us. Unless there's something on that list that aligns with what our community wants. And right now, there are only two publishers for the K through five reading, and so there aren't a lot of choices.
There are not. With the, oh, go ahead. With the, um, with the current process they're doing, they don't do the proclamation, so there's not cycles. And if I sum up your, your report, make sure I'm right on this, it almost feels like it's like a whack-a-mole in how they pull subjects here and there and then they can pull them. Now they've guaranteed what, that if they pull a subject, they're not going to do it again for a certain number of years. But do you, they don't, they haven't really gone on like a cycle, like they're not really committing to that.
They have not committed to a cycle. I have heard that same comment, but I have not seen that in writing anywhere yet.
Until it's in writing, it's not going to happen, right?
And so it is, it is very difficult to plan, yeah.
So for, for our district, I just, in the future, it would be good to know as far as trustees, what can we advocate for legislative committee? What should we be talking about to help give us any type of sustainability and, and ground and ability to do the work we need to do? But I'd also like to hear from y'all. I mean, I know everything's still just kind of moving right now. I would like to at least have some type of cycle. And I think that's somewhere where y'all think you're going to go. But I'd like to know just when you're, when you start developing that, just to come back.
Yeah.
Right now, I, it just seems like it's.
I think the state really does have to set a cycle for us. I think that process worked, you know, it wasn't perfect, but it did help us plan. We could develop our own cycle, but if they, if, if they bring some random, you know, like, kind of like how this, this came about, the, reading and math, yeah, there's, there are some need for resources there. Always they change, but, but social studies has not been addressed in 10 years. So why they chose this approach, I mean, I have my opinions about it, but why they chose this approach in those particular content areas is confusing when we have such dire needs and other. I would say right now, if I, I think untying those strings to the funding would be great. Because schools are locally run and locally governed by this board, but they're really restricting our ability to, to make decisions locally and they're forcing us to potentially purchase only off of that list or tap into our local resources, which are not, you know, the money's not growing on trees right now. So it's, it's, it's a very huge financial challenge for sure.
So given that we just had a new science adoption and social studies really doesn't have any options here, let's say we or any district finds materials from, say, the language arts and, or English and, um, and, and math. Do you still get the 120 or do you get half of that? I mean, is there, is it an all or nothing, um, additional funding?
You only get that money, you can only access that money if you purchase from that state board approved list. So.
For all those areas?
For any of those, yes.
For all and, but you said there's really nothing in social studies right now?
Nothing for social studies right now. We can still purchase and adopt social studies materials.
Yeah.
We just have not been given any funding to do that. That's where, that's where the financial, that's where the $5 million cut a few cycles back is important because we lost all that money. In a way, it looks like they're saying they're giving it back to us, but they're giving it back to us with strings attached. And it doesn't solve the problem that we're left with.
So just to clarify, the IMTA still exists?
It does.
And so there's still funding coming through IMTA? And you can adopt using that money? The problem is, is there's not enough of it to make these adoptions, right?
Right.
Because some of that money is now flowing into IMRA.
Yeah, well, IMTA is, is the, is the umbrella term for all the funding. You, you access it through EMAT, you know, it's not actually in, it's not locally owned. We order through EMAT. But now to access, it's almost like you have two separate accounts within one. So to access the, the $80 per student that's additional, you have to buy for, you can only purchase materials from that list. But you can still use your other IMTA funds as you choose.
Yeah, so, so the other thing to remember is that IMTA has a T in it for technology.
That's true.
And we used to have a technology allotment that went away, that is now in IMTA.
Yeah.
But there's not enough money in IMTA for the IM part, but we're still expected to have the T part.
Absolutely. I mean, to be real honest, it's, you know, our, what is currently available in our IMTA account is all accounted for because of the resources, the annual updates. Some of it, it, some of them are platforms, electronic platforms, so that, you know.
So the other thing to consider, and I don't know, I mean, I'm just making an observation, but right now, the MRE funding is incentivizing these materials. And that's partly because it's a new process and it's new, but it feels to me like it's headed somewhere.
Oh, it's definitely, yes. I think incentivize is a genuine, generous word. I know I chose it, but it's generous.
I just wanted to ask on, because we're, we're doing the work to, you know, possibly use site-based planning to increase our community feedback. Is there anything that we need to be doing to increase our staff feedback on our materials? Because those are, those are our experts. When I think about who I want, you know, in the curriculum and approving this curriculum for my own kids, I want to know, what did the teachers think? What do our teaching and learning staff think? So is there more work we have to do there or are we already receiving enough feedback from our staff?
I would say that we do a really good job. You don't have to beg teachers to give you feedback about the resources that they'll be using because as they should, they have very strong opinions about it. Because there, it's, it's what, it impacts their work day to day. So we involved teachers, I mean, I've only lived through one adoption here, but it, there was a lot of teacher input and I feel like we have a good process for, for getting staff input for sure. And I would say we even added some new ideas that came out of our core content coordinators, like adding all the, putting all the resources at the CIC conference last year. That, that, that gave every teacher the opportunity to at least see things when we were early on and they could see all of the resources and, and provide feedback to their campus-based committee. So I do think we do a pretty good job of that.
And when you said Alicia's talking to publishers, is that to help with the content to be more aligned with the TEES? Or what kind of, um, discussions would that be?
There are discussions and it's just happening, but they are talking with them, trying to get a gauge of what's going to happen down the road. So they, so we can start planning. They're in communications because of the nature of their work with publishers and, and whether it's our adopted resources or just supplemental resources. I mean, that's a big part of their work in general. So part of those discussions, they just get information from the reps, from different publishers from time to time. Does that answer your question? Yeah. Any? All right.
Thank you. I think we're all just a little stunned. I mean, we knew like HB 1605 was going to be a mess. And we kind of, as it was moving through, I remember Trish saying, hey, we're not all like, the sky is falling enough about that? They were, but, they were distracting us with vouchers over here.
Yeah.
And while they were distracting us with vouchers, 1605 came through and, and there were folks that said, it's really going to be devastating, the curriculum. And, and here we are. So I think it's just.
we are. So I think it's just, it's a bummer. But thank you for educating us and bringing us up to speed.
One last question. Sorry. No, he mentioned something at the very end. He talked about technology updates. And is, because of our technology adoptions, we get these frequent updates as opposed to if you don't have a technology adoption, then it's just, the book is just static for a number of years. Is that kind of one of the reasons for doing that?
No.
You mentioned something about technology updates.
Oh, so, were you gonna say something? So IMTA includes paying for technology, it's instructional materials, technology allotment. So we can use that funding for technology. That can be hard, like hardware type stuff or, or software, which is mostly online now. We do pay for quite a few online resources through our IMTA funds, if that.
I, I think the question is perhaps revolving around online resources versus hard copy textbook, whereas online resources update more regularly.
Yes.
Than hard copy textbooks, right? So.
Yes. Yes, they do. So that, I mean, that's kind of the direction that, that all publishers are going. Like there aren't really many hard copy textbooks anymore, period. It's, a lot of it is online. And that is the reason, in fact, I think there even are some criteria in those rubrics. I don't want to misspeak. I can research and, and let you know. But I think there are requirements from a technological standpoint that there can be updates made. That they have to get approval from the state. There's some guidelines to it.
What's interesting is it's not any cheaper.
No.
To do it online than it is to have hard copies?
No.
It just has that update benefit. But at the same time, you're saying they're not even creating the hard copies anymore.
Right.
Per se.
Not right now. So the up, the update, some people have concerns about that as well because they feel like they adopt a resource, but if it's updated after it's been adopted, that does create some communication. So the state that's part of 1605 is trying to, to regulate that. So that, yeah.
All right. Thank you. And you can stay right there because we're gonna move over to our next agenda item, which is our, it's discussion of district and campus improvement plans and annual House Bill three. It's item 7A2. Thank you all.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Hope you guys are still awake. We're gonna talk about the riveting topic of campus improvement plans and district improvement plans tonight and House Bill three update. Okay, that's way over there. Just one more. Yeah, skip for me. All right. So the purpose of tonight is to make sure that we're providing you with an overview on the improvement process for the alignment of our strategic plan to our district plan, to our campus improvement plans. And then also, this is the first time we've done this, we're combining the House Bill update for you. And to provide some context, House Bill three requires that goals and plans for early rating and math proficiency, as well as CCMR are provided to you all annually.
All right. We put this slide up here frequently, but let's take just a minute to remind ourselves about that system alignment and what we are talking about. We're gonna start in the left-hand corner when we think about that five-year strategic plan. Remember, we came together, we asked our community, what is it that we want to see? And worked through that for our five goals for, in our five-year strategic plan. Based on that, we created that community-based accountability. And then below that, you see our district improvement plan and our campus improvement plan. And several years ago, our verbiage in those aligned with that strategic plan as well as our campus, our community-based accountability. And then to the other side of that, we continue that alignment through our superintendent evaluation, which you all have been working on, and then our board evaluation as well.
All right. So what I want to walk you through the improvement process, as you guys all have access to the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plan, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what that process and its cycle looks like. But I want to start by reiterating, reiterating something we talked to you all about last year about the timelines. So historically, we usually bring this topic to you about October. And if you've noticed, it's not October. It's a little earlier. We intentionally have designed a progressive kind of slow rollout of the development of both district and campus improvement plans to make sure that all of the plans are concluded before school starts, which is your ideal target date. That's not the easiest thing in the world to do. And so we have a lot of structures in place that we'll kind of touch on to make sure that we're supporting campuses through that. And this year, one of the big successes we had with that progressive timeline was that all of our campus improvement plans were pretty much done, drafted and concluded, which helped us inform the DIP, which we've talked to you guys about in the past, is making sure that those campus plans are informing the district improvement processes and that there really is intentionality and streamlining. So as you review those campus and district improvement plans, you're gonna notice some streamlining. You're gonna notice a work-heavy focus on PLCs. We've talked to you all in several presentations about professional learning communities. You will see that in every single campus improvement plan. And I know you've talked a lot about making sure that there's campus context for each campus and that there's differences there, but that there's still some consistency from campus to campus. You will see that in these plans. So that always starts with that comprehensive needs assessment. You'll see that as number one on the, on the chart. And one of the things we've done to help support that, that's probably the most laborious part of developing the improvement plan, is we've created learning sessions that start as early as the, as February the year prior. And any, the minute we get data available, we're providing that data to campuses, we're providing learning sessions where they can come and work through developing that data and what is the summary of the data? What are the strengths that we're seeing? And then what are the opportunity statements? Those opportunity statements then help each campus develop the selection of key questions. And this is where that differentiation comes in. So we work with the campuses on making sure that they're selecting key questions that are tied to the strategic plan and tied to our district improvement plan. And then from those key questions, that's where the campus comes into strategy development. And I'm gonna tie that into question four. It seems like the theme of tonight is site-based. Yep. And I look at Anna, because Anna and I last night were at the same site-based committee and it was incredible, totally incredible. Campus principal came in brand new. The plan was already developed because of this progressive timeline that I've just shared with you. And we put all of the, we, he put all of the posters up around that had the developed strategies, key questions on them, again, intentionally aligned to that strategic plan. But he asked the community who came, which awesome turnout, by the way, are these the right things for our community? You live this community every day. You walk the hallways. Are we developing the right strategies? And the feedback was absolutely incredible. So we want to make sure that we're replicating that structure across our districts, or across our campuses. We have to remember that at least 30% of our principals have three years or less of experience. So our school leadership team is making sure that we're supporting our campuses, supporting our principals and designing structures that actually truly and authentically get that feedback. And that also goes for the district improvement. So we have DEWIC, which is our district improvement council. I believe we had probably 80 people in attendance that night. A huge, huge turnout where we sat and did the same, very similar structure. They were able to provide feedback. We stayed after and made sure that we were being responsive to the feedback and that development. So you should be seeing that reflected in those plans. And then step five is one of the most important steps. It's monitor and adjust. So again, this is a live document. So you're gonna read those plans, but we're gonna be responsive to what we're seeing. We're gonna be responsive to the feedback. Site-based is not a one-time thing. It's all year long. And so we want to make sure that we're coaching campuses and we want to be responsive at the district level as well on what we're seeing.
All right. So we are going to reorient you to what you will see when you look at our district and campus improvement plans. As a board, you approve the goals and the system responses. And you've also approved the HB three objectives. So if we start at the top, you will notice that you'll see the goal. As a reminder, those are five goals. Our campuses choose three, at least three. And underneath that goal, they have their key questions. Each campus this year is focusing on key question, goal one, key question one, and goal one, key question 1.2. So you will see that through each campus improvement plan. If you look below that, you will then see our system response. And that system response is saying, this is what our system needs to do and to respond, this is how our system needs to respond in order to make movement towards that goal. Underneath that, you will see evidence. And these are, these are the measures that we will be looking at to see if we are making progress towards that goal. Underneath that, you see our strategies. And so our strategies are actionable steps that will be taken to meet that goal. And part of what Angela was just talking about, our campus strategies are very specific to what is occurring on that campus. House Bill three goals and performance objectives are still embedded in the plan and they target literacy, math, and CCMR. And lastly, we want to remind you guys that we will not have the accountability information right now. Accountability ratings, targeted support and distinction designations due to the delayed release of this information with DEA. As soon as we get that information, we will add that to our campus and our district plan.
So just as Angela and Kristen spoke about our House Bill three, so when we are, speaking of House Bill three, one of the terms that they use is that early childhood, which can be a little confusing. So I want to make sure that we're clarifying, what does this mean as we're talking through the next few slides? So when we think of our early childhood for, for our literacy and our math proficiency and our CCMR, this is speaking specifically of only one grade level, and that's third grade. The other part that they are referencing is the star proficiency is what they use. And that is looking at the meets grade level. So on the screen that you see, it's that middle section with the, the check mark. So that is a level above the passing level. And just for reference, when we think about the third grade reading and math for star, usually that meets grade level is about 20 percentage points higher than at the passing level. So again, just as we look through the next few slides, is think about, it's one grade level, third grade, and it's specifically looking at the meet's grade level above passing. So when we are looking through these, you will see that you will have the baseline year of 1819. And we are required to set goals for each of the next five years. So as we look at this context, in 1819 was our baseline year. In 1920, we did not have a star assessment due to the pandemic. In 2021, I'll just remind you that we had the star assessment, but it was a greatly reduced participation rate during that year because that was the year the commissioner stated students didn't have to take that if they chose not to. So 2122 was kind of our back to normal year somewhat a little bit. And then in 2223 is when the assessment changed. So specifically, that became, it was required that all of our state assessments would be online. They also changed the type of questions and responses. For example, writing was now included at every grade level instead of just in fourth grade and so forth. So those are just setting kind of the stage and building that assessment and data literacy as to what we're seeing on the slides. So when we look at this first slide, I'm sorry, would you go back one? Just thank you. For third grade reading at the meets grade level, you'll see on the next few slides that LISD is always going to be represented in blue and the state in gray. So this is, I think, one of those pieces, we came to you a few weeks ago and we talked to you about the importance of a balanced assessment framework. So I cannot stress that importance enough this evening because again, this one number up here does not tell a story. It is one measure on one day, one grade level. So again, going back to when we think about the balanced assessment framework is really looking at a much more comprehensive lens for each one of our students. Also, this includes English and Spanish test that you're going to be seeing this evening. And this is, this is not the same cohort of students. I want to make sure that it's not looked at and viewed as a growth. It is looked at as different cohorts of students. So this is again, reporting our third grade meets grade level by our race and ethnicity groups. So our district goals for these groups are 80% for our Asian student group, 65% for white, and 60% for Hispanic and black. And the reason we look at this is because when we had to set those goals back in that baseline year, if you remember, we were charged by the commissioner at that point, every school district with a 90, 60, 30, 90% at approaches, 60% at meets, 30% at masters. So if we were already above that 60 or at that 60, like we were with our Asian and our white student groups, then we, then those were accelerated above that 60 mark. And again, just to provide some context, I guess, and really about data and assessment literacy, thinking through, so let's pretend I am that third grade student coming into our system. I'm a third grader. I'm going to be the, this is the first time I'm going to be taking a state assessment. But let's say I have come in from a different country. So the assessment, my options to take this assessment are in English or Spanish. So I want us to think about the landscape of Leander ISD over the last few years. So y'all know Emily Gray and I adore her and she's my go-to for, like when I have this wondering, right? So she pulled something for me today that I want to just share when we think about this. So when we are looking at students in third grade with a home language other than English, in 18, 2018 and 19, 52% said their home language was Spanish for all students. In 2324, 38%. Okay? So if I am coming in and my home language is Telugu, it is, it is going to be difficult. It is, it is presenting an additional challenge for me as a student taking that assessment. Additionally, for students who qualify for as emergent bilingual because they don't have that English proficiency, in 201819, 61% of those students' home language was Spanish. In 202324, 46%. So we were talking about an elementary campus today, Chris and I were talking about, that has 28 different languages at it right now. We have one that I visited, four school support visited, I guess it was a week or so ago, two weeks ago, that was sitting at 30. So it's not just about our students who are needing English or Spanish assessment. So again, it's, it's just, I think it's important for us just to understand the context for our system and for our students. Additionally, this represents the additional student groups of special education, economically disadvantaged and emergent bilingual. And our district goals for each one of these are 60%. So thinking about what are we doing? So we discussed a few weeks ago about the importance of how we look at data. If you remember, Chris and I were up here and we talked about how are we going to look at data? Because again, a number sometimes certainly does not tell that comprehensive story. So we are really digging deeper into that performance, if you remember, not just by a number here, but at that campus level, looking at it by grade level, by class, by student, by standard. We are also looking at providing professional learning. We have data dashboards that have been developed. We are engaging that, in that as a learning and innovation team with Cabinet, certainly with our campus leaders as well. We just did one a week ago with our campus leaders. And as we have universal screener information coming in, we will certainly be, being digging deeper into that as well. One of the other pieces that we are really considering and looking into is that professional leader, professional learning, excuse me, it's a little after 10, for our campus leaders and our teachers on. and our teachers on that writing piece and those open response strategies.
Can I ask you to clarify one of those numbers really quickly? Or maybe just the charts? Because one thing that I see a lot is, you know, you were talking about how this is one grade on one day, and it's one test. Commentary that I see a lot is these charts go out to the public, and there's a panic. Only 23% of our special education students can read. That's not what this says. So can you just clarify for our community what exactly those numbers are telling us?
That is saying at that 23% for that specific student group, in this sense, special education, starting students who are served in special education, this is that percentage that was at the MEETS level on STAR. Okay? Not at passing, above the passing level. They had to get to a higher percentage of getting the percentage of answers correct. Okay? So also, thinking about this, though, when we think about students who are served in special education, they also have the opportunity to take a STAR alternate test as well. So, and I thank you for asking that question because it is very important for us, like I said, when we are looking and understanding and building our data and assessment literacy, what does this really mean to us? Thank you.
I wanted, that was my next question. When we're breaking down this data for special education, is that including the STAR too and the regular STAR?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know if that was, okay.
And we did change, actually, in 2324, we did change, and I do want to make this statement, we had a change in which the requirements or the qualifications to take STAR alt has changed. And so some of our students who had been traditionally taking STAR alt now didn't, no longer qualified to take that type of assessment and were moved to STAR.
Just, just clarify, that is all determined by the students and art committee, correct? That is not a decision made by you or me?
No, ma'am.
That is always?
That is at the state level.
Right? And that is the decision by the art committee can decide if the student could take the STAR too or not, right?
We actually have a form and criteria that we must go through to determine if a student qualifies, and that same criteria is for across the state.
So the format of the test in 2018, 2018, 2019 through 2021, 22, it was the same format of the test? And then 22, 23 is when they introduced writing in all the subject areas?
We had writing before in fourth grade, seventh grade, English one and two, right? But now it is short constructed responses and extended constructed responses at every level.
Okay. And then, so that started in 22, 23? And then between that year and then this past year, 23, 24? So you've mentioned one change, which is some of the students that were taking STAR alternate before now have to take the, the regular STAR test?
Yes, ma'am.
Were there other changes that went from one year to the next for these last two
I think the big, just honestly, I think the, those, those are probably the two biggest changes within these last two years.
Okay.
And that stand out.
AI grading?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
AI grading versus human grading?
The AI grading came into play this past year, and I know there's been lots and lots of discussion around that. What we're finding is that the students are asked to respond. You remember how they used to respond to a prompt? Okay? They are now responding like to a reading passage and having to address that passage. And so it is a little bit different type than what they have experienced in the past. So again, it's, it's just the different type of format. Most of it prior to 22, 23 was all multiple choice questions as well. That is no longer the case. So we have, we have the writing portions of it. We have more of what I call fill-in-the-blank type of things. So it is no longer where a student can say, okay, I have A, B, C opportunity, and maybe I'm unsure on this one, but I can, I may guess on that. That's not going to be the situation that our students are facing any longer when they're looking at that state assessment.
At the conference this weekend, no, not last weekend, oh my goodness, the days are running together, but they were talking about this very thing. And one of the slides they had said in the spring of 2023 on STAR for their ECR portion, a certain student population group, they'd broken up by some sub-pop, so they got a sub-pop to look at it, and said in 2023, 28% had scored zero. When they went and looked at it in 2024, 52% had scored a zero. That's an 86% increase in a zero in one year. I don't think you could make the thought that all students just didn't learn that year.
All of a sudden did.
So there is definitely some, some things to ponder and noodle. I will still say, okay, but what does this show me? And like you said, what are the other data? What are the other data points? So, you know, I think that could be used for something, but be very careful drawing conclusions on exactly what that means and doing the other data points.
Right.
Is the way I was looking at it.
Exactly.
So there was the AI scoring piece to consider, but, but also just the way we score these responses in general, the significant increase in zeros is alarming, you know, because there is, without going into the details of how these, these things were scored, it's, it's like we changed the way they're graded, but we didn't necessarily clarify that to everybody to inform the way we teach kids to respond in these certain situations. So it does give you a, a bit of context to think about what that number means, or even what an individual student score means when you take those answers into consideration.
I'd just like to add a couple of observations, just because the way the data is represented in these charts forces your brain to say this is a comparison from year to year, and it's either increasing or decreasing. But that's really misleading because of several things we've mentioned already. Number one, this is different cohorts of children, and so you're not comparing the same children over time. So you can't talk about this as increasing or decreasing or growth or not growth. The, the second thing is, there've been significant enough changes to the test that the DEA and the commissioner himself has said that it could easily have been renamed, as we've done in the past. And when we've done that in the past, we've always taken a pause for a year to recalibrate and allow ourselves to reformat, right? And so in, in that case, we wouldn't even be showing past years because it's just not really relevant to what we're looking at in the data now. And so we have to be careful of those things as we consider this data.
Absolutely.
I would, I would, I would say, sorry, who are you? That the only reason we did, we are required to do a House Bill III update, so, you know, it kind of puts us in a tough spot to, we are required to report this, and of course we want to, but it can be misleading to the community for sure.
And that's why we want to be so very clear on what, what is the context behind what's on this screen.
Yeah, and we're not opposed to looking at the data at all. This data is very important for us to look at and consider very carefully. We just have to make sure that we're interpreting it in the right way in the context.
Correct. That is correct. Okay. So moving on, we have the same concept for our third grade math, and our goal is to reach 65%. That's what we decided when we set this back in our baseline year. The next slide is again looking at our race and ethnicity groups, and our goals for our Asian student group is 88%, 62% for our white student group, and 60 for our Hispanic and Black student groups. And our goals for our special education, economically disadvantaged, and emergent bilingual are all 60% for 2025.
So one of the things I wanted to add back to reading is, if you remember, we've talked, we just did a board update on the program evaluation for the math work that had been done in the year prior. But there was also a reading focus through early literacy intervention, and that is continuing. And there's refinement similar to, we didn't do a program evaluation on it, but we, there, there was some refinement that's being made to that process. The key with reading is early intervention. I mean, the, the earlier you, you, you make those gains with students, the, the less likely you are to end up with performance gaps down the road. So that is a, that's a huge consideration when we look about, yes, there are lots of things to, to give context to this data, but we are using it, and we are trying to make, we are making adjustments to positively impact this data. It's just takes time for it to implement. I think the ongoing focus with PLCs and how we're looking at data at all levels of the organization is a huge piece. Also, through that collaborative team process, we spent a lot of time in, in math and reading last year at the elementary level, in particular focusing on content and resource use and aligning and understanding, and that teachers are aware of what is available and how to use it to the best, for the best outcome with students. I'd say through the, the collaborative team focus this year, the focus is more on strategy of how, how, how to engage students. And that takes us back to those one-pagers that were referenced in the previous presentation. So engaging students at a deeper way, in a deeper way. So in terms of math, sorry, I lost my place here a little bit. Some of the things that we've been doing is, and we, again, we, we looked at that program evaluation last time, so I don't want to be repetitive on that. We've even taken that and started looking at ways to monitor it more tightly throughout the year, as Dr. Gutierrez is urging. And then the PLC support. And then a thing that, that we're all really excited about, that the math team came up with, is this focus with building thinking classrooms. So we're really, it's, it's a K through 12 initiative, and I know we're talking about third grade data right now, but it's in the Glenn Feeder pattern, and we're working with Glenn teachers, Danielson teachers, and then the instructional coaches from all elementaries, but particularly in the Danielson feeder, I mean, the, the Glenn feeder pattern are being invited to participate to help and, and increase that type of practice at their campus. So I think we'll switch now to college, career, military readiness. So the, the slides are in a similar format. The blue line represents the, the district, and the gray is the state. So our goal here was to reach 90% when the class of 2024 graduates. So one thing, just to remind everybody, there is that lag of data reporting with CCMR. So when the class graduates, we don't see that data show up in our accountability plan until the following year. So our goal is based on this year's graduating, was last year's, I'm sorry, graduating class, but we don't get that data until the next accountability cycle. Same thing, we have, we break these out by race and ethnicity. And you can see that we saw a positive turn there for our Black students. Goals for Asian and white students were 95% by class of 2024, 81% for Hispanic students in the class of 2024, and 74% for our Black students in the class of 2024. And then again, broken out by program participation, special ed, economically disadvantaged, and our emergent bilinguals. And our goals for that are 95% of our special ed students when that class of 2024 graduates, 78% for economically disadvantaged, and 60% for emergent bilinguals. Okay, so this slide breaks down TSI achievement for each graduating class. So students can reach CCMR criteria in a number of ways. Most of the students in our district meet that through TSI, which is the Texas Success Initiative. They have to meet it in reading and math, and most of our students do that on SAT or ACT. But we do have students who do it through the TSI-A, which is the assessment. You can also take, participate in one of our college prep courses. If you successfully complete and pass that assessment, you can earn it that way as well. But we also have a significant, this is a real strength in our district, the way we help students that participate in our CTE courses earn industry-based certificates. We have quite a few students that achieve CCMR that way, and we saw a significant increase in that in this most recent year due, due to the work of our, our CTE team. So some of the focus areas for improving this is talking about ownership of TSI from a student and parent perspective, and what does that mean? So if you're, if you're planning on going to college or thinking of, even just thinking about it, achieving TSI criteria prevents you from having to take remedial courses when you enter college. So a remedial math or a remedial English. And doing a better job of communicating that and engaging students, helping them understand what that means to them, that's like a true, real-life impact on, for them. But we have to help them own that. And part of that is communicating it and involving them in those discussions. Because once they know, especially parents, it, it becomes financially motivating to them to prevent spending money, tuition money on those courses. And then our CTE team does a really great job of utilizing their collaborative teams across the district, looking at the workforce needs in our local area, and identifying programs, courses, certificates that are going to be beneficial to kids immediately when they graduate. You saw earlier tonight, students that participated in our, in our, some of our courses that are now electricians building some of our schools. So there is definitely a population of students that that is very appealing to and beneficial to them, and so they do a great job of, of working on that. This is just a recap. I think everything that's on this slide has already been said, so I won't repeat it. Just some of the highlights. Of course, the detailed information is in all the, the campus improvement plans and district improvement plan. I think that's it.
Yep, I got a question. Not really, it's just, I guess, more of a comment. So slide 16, we were just there. So college, career, military readiness, right? I look at this list, right? And a lot of, I'm thinking about my experience as a parent, first-time high school student. A lot of this information was presented to me at ninth grade night. And last night in our site-based committee, which I loved, one of the things that parents talked about is, how can we know those options for my students as early as fifth grade? Because I'll be honest, short story, like, I had no idea the IB program existed. It wasn't until IB went to that middle school, and my son advocated, and I'll be honest with you, I was met with a barrier because he was in special education, was told IB would not be the route for him. So I know there's probably been other parents in this situation. So I guess my question here is, what are we doing with our feeder patterns in particular to make sure we're educating those parents? It's that transition piece, and I've talked about this, it's the transition years, that fifth to sixth grade, that eighth to ninth grade, but most importantly, it's that third grade, right? You start thinking about what programs are offered at the middle school, because y'all know I will stand on this soapbox. Our campuses are very unique, but we don't offer the same programs at each campus. And as a parent, I want to know what's out there so I can give my kids the best opportunity. So with that said, how can we get this information to our parents, but also like kind of feed it through, like what we talked about at the site-based committee? So parents are aware, hey, for an example, to graduate under an advanced degree plan and be identified as special education. We've seen those numbers go up, but we also know that it comes with training, and it also, it's a mind shift in the way you think about students with disabilities. So I guess it's just kind of, I want to make sure we're educating our parents, but also our students, so they know that they, we can get to this, and we can hit that 95% mark. But the education piece starts before they hit ninth grade.
Okay. She wins. Well, you guys can just pop in afterwards. So I think that's a great question, and I think that we have some campuses that have stepped in and have already started doing these things. We do have some principals that have been at the high school level and now are at a middle school level, and so they see from their own personal experience the value of that. So that is something that we are beginning to do. It is not prevalent across every single campus at this time, but it is, we are all seeing that need as well, and so that is something that, that we are taking steps moving forward.
Chris looks so excited.
Chris looks so excited. Just for perspective, I want to kind of explain a little bit of what we talked about at Glenn last night in regards to like creating the level of excitement for our elementary students. And so some of that is as simple as, like for Glenn specifically, getting the Grizzlies out to elementary campuses and being visible and letting them see the different sports and CTE opportunities. And another thing that got brought up was, how do we almost do field trips for elementary students within that feeder to let them come and see the incredible CTE programs that are on the campus? And things that are, I mean, sports are great, but clubs and all of the different opportunities to help students get excited about those things. And additionally, just making sure that our feeder patterns are strong enough and collaborating is strong enough to say what could be brought through the entire feeder. So a good example of that is our incubator program, where you have that going from elementary all the way to middle. So if we have that in a middle school, then what does that look like in an elementary setting? What does that look like to feed that into a high school and do it within the feeder so a student can have a through line in their experience? And so, we have lots of, actually, we have four dates this year where we're doing what we call principal PLCs. And those are feeder pattern collaborations that are facilitated by central office, and those are opportunities that we could be leveraging to continue those conversations and do what Kristen's talking about in regards to strengthening that. So it's work we'll be doing.
I could have so many questions on CCMR, but that is not going to be tonight. Tonight, as I was going to focus on two things. One is HB3, that's your presentation. The other presentation you said you were going to do is bring us the district improvement plan. But a lot of the discussion has been on HB3. So, I'm going to have just a quick question for HB3 later, because when you go through the district improvement plan, you start reading down, there's a lot more that kind of comes out through this HB3 update. And what I would like to see is kind of something that helps me understand, what does our district expect to be the spread between the districts that go over the district average and under the district average? In other words, if a campus is less than, I don't know, 10 points under what LISD average is, or 20 points, or whatever that is, and if it's over, wherever these outliers are, I would like to understand what reports or data or information you're looking at. And when I say understand, that's not fair to ask. You ought to help me understand. But if you could share some of your reports to give me a better idea of what's happening with the system that's outside of whatever band, whatever band it is, I imagine you'll have a band. But if I don't, then you can tell me I don't have that and tell me what it is you do have. But for those outliers, what is going on with the system that's the outliers? How does that look and how are we addressing it? And then for DIP, is it okay if I go ahead and ask a question about that? So on the district improvement plan, I love, love, love how much we're trying to get this alignment from site-based all the way up to district improvement. I think that's very powerful. And I will say over and over again, how do we empower our committees? And so how is that site-based empowered? What I would love to just get an update on is our site-based committees, do we have the numbers on how many times they met a year? Or what other data point did you use to say that's an active site-based committee? So that as a board, we're like, oh my goodness, how can we help empower our, our site-based committees? And ask about them, or I don't know, go ask my neighbor like, hey, come on, go get on that committee and go. I know it's another meeting, but things are going to happen at this meeting. I can tell from all the discussions happening. And I love the discussion of like, what are our hopes and dreams starting at the site base going right through and following through our strategic plan? I think it's powerful. And then when I looked at our district improvement plan, I saw a few things in there that were exciting. And I had questions about them, but what I'm going to do, because it's at a late hour, is I'm just going to put them on hold and talk to you offline about them. Because after I got to the district improvement plan, I started reading through the campus where the alignment was. And so I'll just follow up with you on those. And maybe if it happens to be before we adopt, I'll ask you a few more questions then, but I'm done with tonight.
I want to echo what she said, just because I'm fresh off that site-based committee. And I have a lot of kids in the district, gone through all the different schools. But what I saw last night, especially as a trustee but as a parent, was that alignment. But most importantly, it was that education piece to parents that felt like I have a seat at the table. Like I want to see, one thing in particular stuck out was, parents want on-ramps or IB. They're asking questions for more advanced programming. And like you said earlier, Chris, they're going to feel a lot more comfortable talking to their principal or their student's teacher rather than, y'all are great. But they don't, you know, they don't have that connection piece. So to kind of piggyback what Trish said is, what are we doing to ensure that, one, our principals are supported at that level, right? That's another task for them to take on. And we know a lot of the times, maybe two parents show up. But so how, what are we doing to help, one, I don't want to say revitalize this site-based committee, because I think the structure we have in place is great, but how do we make it more acceptable? But also, that alignment with the district and campus improvement, that parents can see that progress rather than wait two to three years and some random thing on the internet, which is probably not true. And so like, what can we do to empower parents, but also empower students at that site-based committee? And how can we, like I said, that alignment? Like I want to see what we saw last night, because that was some powerful stuff, y'all. It was amazing. And I just, what are we doing to support our principals for that?
Community-based accountability at its finest is what I'm hearing. That's beautiful, that's beautiful. And I think it's important from just listening is, and I know which campus you're speaking of, and I saw pictures of it, it was wonderful. But it's really about involving, especially in a time right now when we are absent of our state accountability for the last two years, right? But that's not what it's about. And we've sat here certainly and talked about that with our community and with you about that that one rating does not, does not tell us everything, right? When we look at our different goal areas. And so, but it's really about involving, and when you talk about the site base, it's really about involving the community. It's about your staff, your parents, and your student. Is, if this is what we're working toward, then how do we do that together? And that's what, that's where the power, I feel, comes in, right? And that's, whether that's at a campus improvement plan or whether that's our district improvement plan. We talked about the cascade of collaborative teams, right? That's what it means right there as well. It's how are we coming together with that collective effervescence, Dr. Clark, to make, not what I call just a document, but how do we really bring voice to it?
Okay, so this was discussion, are you done? Okay. This was discussion. For next time, it will be on the agenda for approval. So just check in if you want it on the regular agenda or if you mind it going to consent.
Unless you want me to ask questions tonight.
Consent.
If y'all want to do consent, then I want to ask my questions tonight. So, does that make sense? Like I have questions on the DIP, because I read over some pieces and I was going to ask them when it's on our next agenda item, because I didn't want to drag us out tonight.
Now that helps.
But if it goes on consent, then I'll go ahead and ask tonight.
We'll put it on regular agenda, thank you. We're good? I mean, I can keep talking if you want me to.
No, sorry, we will, we won't have it on consent next week, so that way we can continue with conversation. Sorry, we had that conversation and we didn't share it back. So apologies for that.
Wait, are we having it on consent?
No, we're not going to have it on consent.
I'm like, wait, it's getting late. Thank you.
That way we can ask all the questions, because, yeah, we still have quite an agenda to go for tonight. So, I know, everyone's like, uh, really? But we are going to move item 7B2 to our next board agenda. And now I'm going to move us over to 7C1, which is consider approval of the TEA certification waiver. He just left. Oh, sorry.
All right, good evening. Are we ready to hear about TEA waivers? Okay. So I, first of all, I'm going to introduce myself officially. My name is Tiffany Duncan. I'm the interim chief human resources officer. And so I am excited to be able to bring you a presentation tonight. The purpose of our presentation is to review the TEA teacher certification waivers and request approval for the 2024-25 school year. We talked about this topic around this time a year ago, and this would be a continuation of the waivers in addition to some additional teachers that we'd like to use for waiver certifications this year. So, we're going to talk a little bit about a few refreshers with the TEA waiver certifications, and then we'll move into the, this year, some of the things that we've learned moving forward and what we're recommending tonight. Okay, so a little bit of background. The education code allows for districts to apply for waivers for various things. And a certification waiver basically allows a person to teach without the necessary certification requirements of the state for up to three years. This is an annual approval in terms of the waivers. The waivers are limited in the sense that they are not permissible for pre-K, special education, or bilingual teacher positions. We talked quite a bit about this last year, but I will go over briefly and I'm happy to go into any more detail that you need. But we did want to include a slide that talked about why we need to utilize this option. There are a lack of certified candidates that we've experienced, and it's not just in our district, it's state and nationwide. We have had a steady reduction in people, of people entering the field. Unfortunately, that is still the case. So our university programs for educators are having those lower numbers and we're still seeing that. And we also want to be transparent with our community. So if we're needing to utilize this option, we want to present it upfront. And if we're needing to continue this waiver certification program that we piloted starting last year, you know, we want to be upfront about those needs. Just as a reminder, some of the expectations that we have for teachers who are on a certification waiver for our district is they're required to have a bachelor's degree or higher. So that's the minimum educational experience. We do want them to have related education or experience in the assigned area. We are requiring these employees to be enrolled in alternative certification programs or to hold a teacher cert out of the assigned area. And then, we also have other mechanisms that we can use for putting folks in the classroom, such as temporary classroom assignment permits or emergency teacher permits. Many of those programs, or those two programs usually require somewhere around 18 semester credit hours of the particular subject area. And so, if they qualify through those programs, then we can run them that way. These certification waivers typically, that means that we have a candidate who's otherwise qualified, has the bachelor's degree, but might not meet those very specific credentials. So a little bit of background on last year, I did go review, just so that I could know what we talked about. We estimated the use of about 50 of these certification waivers last year. We actually used 32 in 2023-24. 24 of those were elementary teachers and eight were secondary teachers. The majority of our teachers on certification waivers have actually remained in the district. That exact number is 21. We have 21 who remain. Out of that 21, seven of those are fully certified. So we've seen, we've seen progress. We've seen progress there. And then that leaves 14 folks who are still actively working through all of the requirements and the alternative certification courses. Teachers on the certification waivers, just as a reminder, are at-will. That means they are non-contract employees. They don't hold the Chapter 21 certification, and so we don't issue those contractual Chapter 21 rights. Okay, so that was kind of a look back and a reminder and refresher. And I'm going to pause in case there are any questions about those slides. Okay. All right, moving forward. I think this is one of the most important slides. What did we learn in this year of piloting and using the certification waivers? Well, we learned that TEA is only going to approve one-year certification waivers. And those have to, those can be renewed annually for up to two additional years. So there was much discussion last year about whether we do this for one year or two years. Either way, we have to come to you and we have to seek that approval this evening. The certification process is taking longer due to increasingly stringent program certification requirements. I'm going to give you a 24-25 example. They are almost doubling the observation hours required in those ALCERT education programs. I appreciate the fact that we are regulating those and making sure that their quality learning, that's good, but it does extend the time. And that lends into this next important bullet, which is that it's very challenging for teachers to work on certification while teaching full-time. We're understanding of that. We believe that those who have stayed with us are working hard on that. And then, we learned a lot about how to support, encourage, and then hold those accountable. So we are implementing some new strategies, assuming that we have the support for continuing this program. We've got some great ideas for some new strategies. You know, we're, we're reaching out to these folks monthly. We're checking in with principals. But for example, we want to implement a form that's very specific as to, okay, how many observation hours do you have done? How many modules out of X, Y, or Z do you have done? We're doing a pre-assessment at the outset so that we can then help them align their goals and truly become certified by the end of that two-year cycle. So we're excited about some of the more sophisticated ways we're able to approach this year. Okay, so I kind of cheated, and I talked a little bit about how we're improving our process. So if I'm redundant, excuse me. I'm going to go ahead and read through because I don't want to miss anything. We are providing additional information to campuses. We're increasing that communication, like I mentioned, between teachers and human resources. We're going to offer some online tutorial programs when possible. And then we also are collaborating with the certification programs. We're trying to make sure there are no hidden surprises, that we understand exactly what our staff members we're supporting need, and the programs do differ. So we've got to continue to develop those relationships with all of the ALCERT programs that we work with. We are gathering feedback from teachers. I will tell you, the number one piece of feedback in this arena is typically, it's really hard to be working full-time and also meet all my modules. So we're, we're really trying to work on how to support them through that. And then we are also piloting a UTEACH partnership in math and science. So those are some exciting things that we're doing. So currently, if we were to continue to support the waiver certifications, our estimated staff, number of staff would be 53. We have the 14 staff I mentioned who are carrying over to complete their certifications from year one. So I'm going to call those year-two waivers. And then we'll have 39 additional staff that we would estimate for 2024-2025, who would then begin that cycle of year-one waivers. And that's 23 elementary teachers and 16 secondary teachers. So that is what I have for you by way of information. And unless there are any other questions, then I'll move forward and ask you for the recommendation this evening.
Thank you. I sent her my questions and she peppered them all into the presentation. So thank you.
Okay, great. All right, well then, we would recommend that the board approve the TEA teacher certification waivers for the 2024-2025 school year.
I move the board accept the administration's recommendation to apply for certification waivers for teachers due to critical need for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second?
Francesca makes motion, Trish seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Five, five motion passes.
Thank you, we appreciate your support in our creative, innovative ways to bring some qualified staff and teachers and develop those. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, now we're going to move into, I think all the next few items, come on, Pete, bring us home. We're going to start with item 7C3.
Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gering, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk tonight on Agenda Item 7C3. I want to combine, if it's all right with you, also a 7C4 because they're pretty similar. So if you're thinking to yourself, I know this meeting has been long, but wasn't Pete just up here recently talking to us about a nomination for the kid? It's not the same meeting, and we did just do that, but this is a little bit different. So we've, or the we, sorry. The Landor ISD Board of Trustees nominated an individual, Ms. Fox, about a month or two ago for a vacant position due to a change in Senate Bill 2 in the legislature. You had three current board members on the WCAD actually went in, ran for the three new elected positions, and then that freed up there, so they had to fulfill a spot. So that's what that nomination process was. Part of Senate Bill 2 also said that all current board members on WCAD as well as TCAD, that their terms ended this year. And so as such, they're kind of starting from scratch here about new boards. And so they have the three elected positions. So now it's, now we actually need to appoint basically a new board for each CAD.
But what happened to the person we nominated?
We nominated, they didn't get, of all the votes, of all the member entities, that person did not get the position. So we nominate, puts it on the ballot, or puts it to get to the ballot. Because it was filling a vacant one, they were able, the board was able to look at all the entities who submitted a name, like we nominated a name. There are other entities, member districts that nominated other names. They were able to select who they felt was, who they wanted to. So that's what that process was.
Is that the same process, though? Is it we nominate names and then they select off here too?
Yes. So we nominate, no, each district will nominate names. We can do up to five each. They all go to the CAD. The CAD then creates its ballot. That'll give us back to us by the end of October. This is like the regular, but it's all positions at one time.
This is basically the regular process, but over again.
It's a regular process for all five positions now instead of staggered like they usually. But there will be stagger going forward, but we're doing like a little reset here, so we've got five. So each CAD, although it's the same law, each CAD has a couple differences I want to just point out in the process. So I'll walk you through that real quick. And we'll do Travis County first.
Thank you, by the way. I'm sorry, I just, I'm venting over here because I feel like we've been set up. So thank you for helping us go through it.
Oh, no problem, no problem. So on Travis County, which is Landor ISD, is the smallest, we have a smaller part of the total value in Travis County. So we have 155 votes is what the Landor ISD board has. And so on this, on the Travis County, there will be five positions. All the board, all that this board needs to do is come up with five names, or up to five names. You don't have to have any names, but up to five names. We don't need to designate the term length of anything of that nature for Travis County. We submit the five names. After, when that process goes through, they will draw straws to determine. There's two one-year terms, and there'll be three-year terms. Now, WCAD is a little different. When we nominate the five for WCAD, we need to specify which two, if we do five, if the board selects five people, which two would be for the two one-year terms, and which three would be for the three-year terms. So, I mean, you know, ever forbid it matches up equally, so. So that's what we're asking. So in a nutshell, the WCAD did let us know that the current board members, Mr. John Lux, Laura Weber, Harry Gibbs, Michael Wee, and Lisa Berkman are all willing to continue to serve if so desired by the board or anybody else. So what we're asking is a little bit different. We just got this information right before the last meeting, so we couldn't have it last meeting, and it's a fairly quick turnaround. Bless you. And so what we're asking is if the board could get the names to myself, preferably by next Wednesday, give or take. That would allow me to put the names together, put them on the list, include them in the board update, also begin emailing the board members just to get their packets, to get that information ready for the board, because the information would be due for the next board meeting the following Tuesday. So we could have that ready and then have the resolution prepared. It is, I do apologize, it is a little quicker turnaround than we would like, but we had one counties right at the end, but we didn't get the second county until the first week in September, which is not for that, the first meeting of the month. So we didn't able to make that deadline. Once we get that, we will submit those names. The Cads will have until October 30th to return us the ballots. We'll get that information to you, and then we have until December 15th for the board to cast their votes. I know that's a lot, and it's a little bit different just because it's two Cads, same law, but meeting it two different ways. But are there any questions I would do to ask, when you do submit, if you'd, just send me the name, an email, and a cell number or phone number for the person, I can reach out and get that information available. But are there any questions? I know we've kind of talked a little, it's been a late night, I've talked a little fast, but it's, we're good?
Just a quick comment, that it's a complicated process, but it's a really important process for us because who we put on those boards make really important decisions.
And since I did mention Travis County, on the Williamson, Williams County, we have 730 votes. And those are just reports, so.
You gave us names on WCAD of individuals who were interested. Were there any TCAD that you already had?
There were no names provided from the TCAD.
So I'm just going to ask my regular question. So if we don't have more than five names that come up from board members, would this be okay to go on consent?
If we have five or less names, we can submit?
Yeah.
Yes.
If there's more than five, then we'll bring it on the regular agenda.
But if there's less than five, just put it on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're happy to move on over to item 7C5. Consider approval of the 25 budget amendment.
All right, members of the board, tonight we have our budget amendment number three, but it's actually one of the larger ones that we're rolling over, the POs that were not received prior to June 30th. So I know there were some questions, it can get a little confusing, so I'm going to walk through it just real quick. I'm going to use approximate numbers. So if you look at the number we provided you for the end of '23-24, it should show about approximately about expenditures exceeding revenues by about $4 million. Part of that $4 million, approximately three of that are encumbered POs that we did not receive the goods prior to June 30th. So that number is included in the last year's fiscal year. It's not, otherwise we'd be about a million deficit, but we're $4 million deficit. So what we do every year is we take those POs, not all of the POs, some we don't, but if there's a good reason, we roll those forward. So what we're adding, asking is to take that $3 million that's not counted, that is counted in last year's number, and actually just move it over to this year. So it's not, we're not double counting, we're not, in theory, it would make the deficit this year more, but it also didn't roll to fund balance because it's held out in the prior year, so. But other than that, it's, that's the main piece of the budget amendment. There is a small portion, $50,000 of new construction facilities allotment that we are rolling forward to help wrap up some purchases for High School Elementary. And then other than that, there's, those are the two big ones on the amendment. If there are any questions, we're more than happy to go through the specifics of it, but if there's no questions, then.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve FY25 Budget Amendment Number Three as presented.
Second? Francesca makes motion, Trish seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. All right, item 7C6, Business and Finance Monthly Reports.
All right, our next four items are monthly reports. I will go through them fairly, point out any unique parts of it, but other than that, we'll kind of go through them, since they're standard reports. Just real quick on the bond report, usually don't spend a lot of time on the bond report. I'm not going to spend a vast amount of time tonight, but just wanted to bring it, a couple of highlights, since it was brought up earlier in the meeting. Just real FYI, in the '23 bond that was recently passed by our taxpayers, we have sold about $277 million of that bond. We have $146 million has actually been encumbered, but we've really, actual spent, we've only spent $63.6 million of that. So I anticipate having another bond sell in the late, mid to late spring. We had a small bond from 2021, if you recall, just over $33 million. We have spent $13 million. We have about $9 million encumbered, so a remaining balance of about $11 million, so about a third of that outstanding. And then on the 2017 bond, $513 million total. We have just about $62 million remaining of budget in those three bonds that we have outstanding. The next item is our monthly financial report. I don't have anything really to say that are out of the ordinary in that report. The investment report, just report, we earned $855,000 in interest in the general fund, $863,000 debt service, and $316,000 and $264,000 in the two capital funds respectively. And then our last report, the monthly tax collection report, we finished the year '23-24 current and delinquent at 99.21%, which was down about .5% from the prior year. But when you look at the supplemental roll, we finished the year at 99.27%, which was .32% lower than the prior year, so. Any questions on the monthly reports?
No questions, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, have a good night.
All right, it is 11:13 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter, Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers, Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed, Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns